All right, we'll call the April 11th meeting of the Board of Appeals to order, 7:34. Would you please rise for Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Some housekeeping items, I believe we have excused absences tonight from Mr. Morgenthau from Denny and Nathan, so we can note that in the record. Otherwise, our board is fully comprised with regular members and one alternate. So I know we have a lengthy agenda tonight, I know there's a lot of people here, we're going to do our best to move along as quickly as we can, give everybody their opportunity to be heard, and we might go out of order a little bit on a couple of matters to keep things moving, but otherwise, hopefully, we'll be moving right along. So, next on the agenda was the acceptance of minutes from March.
They're not ready.
They're not ready, so we will table that. And I think we had also had a minutes discussion from the last meeting, if anybody wants that revisited, we can always revisit that. Committee reports, I think we have none for tonight, right?
That's correct.
All right. Number four on the agenda is the matter for Mr. Morris for 1 Peter Street. That if you want to come up and tell us where you are, that was from our last meeting, you were here for a minor modification or insubstantial change of your plan, and I think, was there also the request for the variance extension?
Yes.
Filed, okay. All right. Do we have that, Merrill?
Yes, please, in your pocket.
Okay.
My name is Bethany Nelson, I'm the architect helping Steve, and I do have handouts of a few of our latest revisions.
Is this stuff that we already have?
You have a large sheet with this on it, which is all the setbacks comparing old setbacks with new setbacks.
Yep.
So it's a more isolated condensed version of what you have, so.
If you want to, that's fine, as long as it's in the record, I mean, we can take it and Merrill can take one. So just to recap, from the last meeting, you were working on the decks, right? Because they were encroaching into part of the setback that wasn't approved.
Yes.
That's correct.
All right.
So, for me is that we eliminated one deck.
Okay.
And we took a bite out of the other deck. So, why don't you pass me the elevation board. If I may.
Sure.
These are the latest elevations that you've been seeing. So, from Peter Street, there's no change. I don't think that was understood totally last time because we didn't point it out that there will be no removal of the roof, no new second floor. So from Peter Street, you're pretty much going to see what you see now. And then from Petuitt Street, side street, you'll see this. So you can see this perpendicular addition, the two bedrooms above, garage underneath, and the new roof is slightly lower than the existing. So, all of that is setback, fully within what's already there. So there's no extension, he has a variance to extend for his first sheet, but this is so reduced that we didn't go beyond the existing house with the addition. So the two deck areas that were in question, one of them was on this side, on the Petuitt side, and we've eliminated that, we just have a small landing.
Is that the 14 foot 2 inches?
No, that's on the other side.
This is the 19 foot 6 inch?
Yeah. This one here off of Petuitt, the setback is 38 feet, which is what it is now. And we haven't extended the house or the deck beyond the existing edge of the house. And on the other side, the one you just mentioned.
Yeah.
Now we have 14 foot 2 as our key dimension.
All right.
We had, the variance issued has 13 foot 6, and that's where we went awry last time when we came, that was 12 foot 2, we could extend it to that. But now we're.
You're back within.
We're back within.
What's appropriate, all right.
Side setback there is 16 feet, and we're not going to go into that, so. So hopefully, this should be the trick. If there's any questions, feel free.
I.
Steve also did apply for an extension of the variance that was granted before.
Yeah, he's entitled to a one-time, six-month extension. By written request. If I can find it, do you see it? Is it attached to, oh, here it is. It's dated April 5th. All right, I don't have any questions to you, but everybody else may.
I'm also, Mr. Chair.
Well, if the board is satisfied with what's been presented, I would suggest that the board would then make the finding, or the board could make the finding if they're so inclined to deem it an insubstantial change, and also make the finding to approve the extension that you're allowed by right. So, that would, I would suggest be in the form of a motion as it relates to.
Do we let the public hearing, is there a public hearing on this?
Well, there's no new public hearing, there's, they're here, they're working off the, what was approved already.
I'm just asking, yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't think so in terms of this. I think if the board were to find that it's a substantial change from what was submitted, I think they would then need to notice a new public hearing. But I think in this context, they're clearly within what was approved, in fact, they've lessened the plan, so.
Then I'll make the motion to accept the revised addition plan dated April 5th, 2017, from Scott Ludwig.
I think we have to deem it first that it's not a major modification.
Okay, whatever we have to do.
Well, you could add to that motion, you could say to it.
And then add to it.
You could add to it and say that, make the finding that it's an insubstantial change.
That in my opinion, that is a very minor change in what we have previously allowed.
Okay, so you, so, insubstantial change, right?
Insubstantial.
Okay.
And you want to add to it to an extension of this variance?
Well, let Paul read it, he's the clerk.
No, it's just.
You're making a motion.
Well, let's just do one, let's do one motion.
You want to do one at a time?
Let's do one motion at a time, just to keep the record clear.
I thought you would ask to have him look at some.
Well, I just.
You just changed?
No, as to the change, so you want to approve it.
Yes.
Based on the insubstantial change?
Yes.
Okay, that's the motion, is there a second?
A second to the motion.
Second, okay. Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll deem that insubstantial with respect to the extension. You want to move to approve that?
Motion approved, I don't have a copy of the notice unfortunately, is there a separate notice, I'm happy to.
Yeah, you want me to?
It's just a request.
Oh, that's all?
Yep.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the letter for a time extension for the property located at 1 Peter Street, map 24 parcel 62 north, in over Mass, 0845 nerve 4, zoning district, which is a, there's a notice of decision for the year 2016, which is recorded in the registry of deeds at book 14735, page 106. It is a notice of decision for the applicant Stephen Morris, the address 1 Peter Street, the hearing date was May 3rd, 2016, and June 20, 2016, petition number 2016-002. So, did I make the motion to extend and then?
Yes.
Note the plans, Mr. Chair?
I think, I think we should, yep.
Included in the motion, Mr. Chair, are a handful of plans, first is titled "A Revised Addition Prepared For In Honor Of Record, Stephen Morris Site Address, 1 Peter Street, North Endover, Mass." Looks like it was prepared by Great Northern Survey at 378 Littleton Road, Chelmsford, Massachusetts. There are, it's dated, that's not the right one, is it? February 10, 2017?
April 5th.
That one.
April.
Right, dated April 5th, 2017, Scott T. Ludwig, professional land surveyor. We also have a packet of, packet of three plans, the first of which is titled "1 Peter Street, North Endover, Massachusetts Site Plan, Proposed House Footprint," and it appears to be undated, but showing 1 Peter Street. Attached to that are the revised addition plan that I just noted, Mr. Chair, dated April 5th. Finally, there is a broadsheet, "Proposed additions and renovations, 1 Peter Street, North Endover, Massachusetts, dated 4/4/2017, for Steve Morris owner, prepared by De Castro Nelson Associates, Inc., and Boston Building Consultants." They appear to be, I have two sheets, but I bet there are more.
I think there's just two.
There's a cover sheet and there is a three.
Are there more than one sheet, more than two sheets?
The, all of the construction plans, total of five sheets.
What's the title sheet?
We have those that here if you need them.
Do we have those on record, we have them filed? Sheets 1 through 5?
So there are a list of drawings on the cover sheet, Mr. Chair, T1, A1, A2, A3, A4, and A5. I think so, when does the motion, Mr. Chair?
Okay, motion, is there a second?
I'll send it in motion.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Deemed that approved, so we'll issue you a new decision with respect to that.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, we're going to go slightly out of order, just because of the.
Because you can. That's what I was saying, just because you can.
So, is Brook School ready?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good luck. All righty. Mr. Koch, when you are ready?
I'm ready, Mr. Chair.
You want to notice the public hearing?
Oh, I'd beg your pardon, of course. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall located at 120 Main Street, North Endover, Mass. on Tuesday, April 11, 2017, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Brook School for property 1160 Great Pond Road, map 0103.0, parcels 0028, North Endover, Massachusetts, 0845, and the R1 zoning district. The petitioner is requesting a variance from Table 2, Dimensional Requirements, R1 Zone, the allowed height 35 feet. Proposed height is 48 feet, the variance requested therefore is 13 feet. Application supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Endover, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours 8 to 4, Tuesday from the hours of 8 to 5:30, and Friday from 8 to 11:30. By order of Board of Appeals, Albert P. Mansfield III, S. B. R., the Chair.
Okay, thanks, great job. So, you guys have an electronic proposal? Is that what's going on?
No, no, we have, we have this material here.
Oh.
Wasn't sure if I could put it up on the screen.
Oh, I see, that's, okay.
Ready?
Yeah, your hearing, welcome, thank you, just please, I mean for the record.
Sure, I'm Jason Bowers, do I need to speak into that microphone?
It's helpful.
Okay, all right. I'm Jason Bowers with Ann Bayor Architects, joined with Steve Scribner from Ann Bayor Architects, as well as Paul Griffin, the CFO from Brook School, Anthony Cleves from Woodham and Bingham, our civil engineers, and Norman Kinnear from Brook School as well. And we're here, as we stated, to review the height variance for the new visual performing arts project at the Brook School. We've been working with the school for about three years now, I think, to develop a plan for a new, a new building to replace a series of buildings on their property. As you see here on this plot plan, it's right at the center of the school, right at the heart of the campus, and we're looking to replace the existing barn building, which housed their theater, as well as a residence, storage included, and a series of smaller buildings that were built in the 50s and 60s that were visual arts spaces. So the plan, or the concept, is a series of three buildings, and you'll just see their view right here from the center of campus, let's say it's from Main Street, you can see there, it's a little tilted, but the concept of the design is three buildings, maybe what I'll do is just flip to the site, flip back to this as well, three smaller buildings that each house one of the, one of the arts. So this side right here is music, this is the visual arts, and this is theater, and that includes a theater for about 350 people, which is one of the issues that drove the, the need for increased height, as well as a black box theater. Overall, the building is about 50,000 square feet, and as I mentioned before, it sits at the heart of the campus and replaces the barn, which is approximately here, and a series of smaller buildings here as well. As you can see from the rendering, the design team worked with the existing, what we say, the vernacular architecture of the campus, utilizing pitched roofs, the existing standing steam roofs that are also on campus as well, and clavoured siding, wood clavoured siding. And we are utilizing glass curtain wall to bring light into the building. Any questions on the general site plan, I can move on to some of the building elevations and talk about some of the.
Well, I have, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure, sure.
More housekeeping procedural questions, and it's just to the CFO. Which one, I'm sorry. So, is it, I understand you're the CFO, is there something in our record from the trustees or whomever controls the land saying that, you know, there's the authority to be here?
Is there something from our trustees?
Yeah.
Not that I know of.
So, I mean, in terms of whoever holds the land, who is entitled to the land?
Yeah, but I have a signed authority for the school, so I can give you that document.
I would just like to get something in the file.
Yeah.
I believe you, I just want something in the record.
I'll get that, absolutely.
Okay. And then with respect to the site plan, how did you guys determine, it's kind of a big site plan, right? So in terms of the overall site design, was there a subsequent plan that was needed, or how did you come up with this existing site plan scheme?
The, the, the overall layout of the building and its location on the campus.
In terms of any setbacks or any of that?
Oh, well, it's all within the campus, fairly far away from any lot lines or setbacks. What we were looking to do with the design was to bring the arts into the center of the campus, and we are basically replacing buildings that are at the current location. So, if you look at it, the arts are still roughly in the same zone. So the idea was to keep it all in that same place.
Okay.
So what you're basically doing is updating the whole program?
Right.
Okay, taking some old, decrypt, I don't want you to go through the stuff, some old, underused buildings.
Right, right.
Into a new modern facility.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And so, and then the need for the variance is, the height variance is based on the grading? In terms of?
It's graded, it's based on the building program. So, a theater requires what's called a fly loft, so when you have a stage, all of the curtains, they go up, and that dimension is dictated, the dimension of the building is dictated by the height of the stage. So in order to create, I think we note this in our application, a, you know, an educational facility that's, that's equal to their peer institutions, we, and our theater consultants recommended that the stage, it's roughly actually the same percentage of height.
Because 13 feet's, it's a big variance, 13 feet in terms of height.
Correct.
As it may relate to treetops and, you know, landscape views and so forth, is substantial.
Right, well, the one thing that we did do, that recognizing, not just the variance, but also the importance of scale on the campus, we took measures to reduce the scale of the wing that includes the theater. So, I don't believe we, we don't have a section through there, do we?
No.
So, but you can see here, this is the front half of the building, and then this is the theater wing. We have a series of staircases that step down to go into the theater, and what that allows us, go down to this wing of the building, that allows us to drop the building down further on the site and take advantage of the site slope, because generally, the site slows down in that direction.
So is there, and I don't mean to be peppering your customers, is there a topography plan that shows what the grading is in terms of what's driving the need for the variance?
If we were to have a building that met the limited height, we would have to have our theater below grade, and we wouldn't actually be able to get into the building from grade, because we have to basically take that 15 feet and drop the entire building 15 feet down into the ground.
But there's no topography plan filed with us, or is there, that shows what that grade is?
We do not file a, no. We can, we can get that for you.
Okay, I'm just asking, trying to stand the elevation.
Right.
We would note, the existing barn, which is the current theater, is actually higher ridge line than the proposed building.
Okay.
By about 12 feet elevation of the, the west portion of the new building, and so it's approximately at similar ridge line to the highest ridge here, and that's, so it's programmatically equivalent in terms of views.
You're saying the existing elevation?
The existing.
The existing barn building, yeah.
Okay.
Is higher.
Is higher.
What is it now?
The existing theater is housed in what we call the barn, and the barn is actually higher than the building that's replacing it.
Which is?
The elevate, the average elevate.
No, a number. What's the height of it now?
So the maximum ridge height of the existing barn to the street on the west is 44 feet, approximately, now, it wasn't surveyed, so that's sort of as best we, as we could calculate, we don't want that as.
What do you mean, could you explain what you mean by that?
By the 44 feet.
Yeah, you said it wasn't surveyed, but it's 44 feet, what do you mean?
We don't have an accurate survey of the existing building, barn building.
We didn't, we didn't physically go out and survey the ridge line of the existing barn.
Okay.
So based on photos and what we have. Sorry, I used to be a professional architectural surveyor, so maybe I can help your terminology. You as architects went out and surveyed the building a little bit, and then, or are you just saying that you didn't have an actual certified surveyor tell you that?
Both, we made approximate calculations of the elevation of the ridge of the existing barn. We have accurate calculation of the new, the new ridge.
Yes.
Which is the 13 feet.
All right, so you're not sure if it's higher or not higher? That's your best guess?
Our best guess is that it's higher. We're fairly confident that it's higher.
Okay. Wouldn't it be safe to say approximately the same?
No.
Yes, it's substantially higher than the west wing, and it might be approximately the same as the.
Because the site slopes down about 15 feet from this point to that point.
So these elevations, these cross-sectioned elevations that you filed, you know, I'm having a hard time orienting the height.
Right, we have those right up there.
You have those there? Okay.
So, Main Street, which is the elevation of these two gables at this point, that's the site slope there. And at this point here, the floor steps down within the building, so it's actually a finished floor. We've dropped that building down to try to reduce the mass of it due to the theater.
But that building right there that you say is the theater?
Mm-hmm.
The barn that's there is, is higher, I'm not.
Correct, yeah, the barn is over here and it's higher than that point, so probably.
It's, we know it's 12 feet higher approximately than this western building, so it's slightly higher or approximately similar height to the east.
So you're raising the whole barn?
Yes, yeah.
So what you're saying is visually, it's not going to be that bad?
Right.
Right, that was, that was our intent, because we're right in the middle of the campus, we're right next to the chapel building, which is the heart of the campus, and so our task was to make this building better.
Did you bring any pictures? I mean, I know in terms of what it looks like now and then has it relates to?
No, we don't have existing site photos. Do you have any, can we have a hundred?
Okay, it's all right if you don't have, I'm just, just asking, I'm not trying to.
We can follow up.
We're trying to, I'm trying to visualize, you know.
What's there. It's actually hard because there's so many buildings.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say littered around the campus, but there's a series of smaller buildings that have been added on to over time, so it's hard to even, this view, it's hard to even get, so.
And many of those buildings also are exceeding 35 foot, right?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, how does this relate to the other buildings on the campus?
In terms of height?
Well, that would be your best guess, right? Because you don't have any.
We could, we could get the elevation for the Science Center, which is the most recently completed project, which did get a variance for type because it was above 35 foot. So, and I don't know if the hockey arena got that.
The Student Center also has a variance.
Right.
Right.
The library, right.
So, can you, can you tell us, as it relates to the soil shape and topography, you know, that legal test that drives the request of the variances, how, how is this site special in terms of needing the variance?
How is this site special in terms of needing the variance?
Yeah.
Why would we need to have that height?
Yeah.
I think the variance is required because any theater that you build will exceed that height, unless you dig down and have a below grade entrance to a building. So you'd have to ramp down, if it was to be easily accessible, down that 15 feet to get to the theater itself. So, just part of the definition of the theater is it's going to be higher, it's going to be 50 feet.
So when you're asking for a variance, you have to meet a criteria of soil, shape, a topography. What of those three are you asked and asked to give you a variance for? Not because it's the use of the building, what on that site lets us say you need a variance?
Could you repeat the three criteria?
Soil.
Soil, shape, topography.
Has to be a nexus in the land, soil, shape, and topo, so.
Anthony?
That's what drives it. So I'm just asking, because we didn't get a topography plan.
Okay.
In terms of showing us what's going on out there.
Right.
So it's not like a self-made hardship, I need it, I want it, there's got to be something a little bit more for us, and I know it's only our first hearing.
Right.
So we're just trying to, just trying to get right to, now, the existing building may be, if that is in fact already there, you're replacing what's there, maybe that goes to it, it's hard to visualize.
Sure, my name is Anthony Cleves, I'm with Woodham and Bingham Associates, civil engineers for the project. So, kind of back up, so, this is the really only location on the campus for the theater. It's essentially replacing the existing theater facility. So trying to locate it anywhere else really doesn't work for the school, so this is where the building needs to go. And as Jason was alluding to, the nature of a theater needs excessive height. So, and trying to fit that with this existing site, the site slopes top to bottom, you know, about 15 feet or so along this, this line here. So we have an existing topography that we have to deal with in order for it to fit in with the existing infrastructure of the campus. Again, it's, you know, this is where the theater is now, and this is where it needs to go. Some of the soils, the soils are, some of the analysis that we've done are kind of a hard pan, I guess you could say, not great free draining soils, could be some, some groundwater when you get down to where this basement was going to be, so if you were to try and sink that even lower, we're going to have, you know, some excessive soil issues to deal with with the foundations, you know, de-watering, it's also going to become, you know, a very expensive project to even, to even build that.
So can I ask, are you within the Watershed Protection District?
Yes.
Did you request a variance for a waiver from the Watershed Protection District?
We've received a permit from the Planning Board for site plan approval as well as Watershed Protection.
They can't grant you a variance for Watershed Protection?
Well, we didn't ask for variance, I mean, for, for height.
Still, still would need a variance under Watershed Protection.
We got a permit through them for a building within the general zone of the Watershed Protection District. The, our variance was not required for that, for being in the Watershed Protection District.
All right.
We went through the, we went through the process with.
Well, the Planning Board, you know, can issue a special permit unless the request for variance is granted, so I guess I'm a little confused on that.
You mean the height variance?
The Watershed Protection.
We didn't need a variance for the Watershed Protection.
If you, if you're within the Watershed Protection District, you do. If you're within the watershed protection district, you do.
You need a special permit, correct?
After you get a variance.
It's a special permit. It's an allowed use, and we have the, I have the building.
I don't know if that's in our record, so we'll have to check.
The building inspector's bylaw review form, where it says special permit for a planning board for site plan approval and special permit for a watershed special permit. We didn't ask for anything different beyond the requirements, so the town of Andover, no, no bylaws that would require a variance.
Okay.
Are you saying that you should go to conservation first?
I didn't say that.
Okay, because I hear the word watershed.
We did conservation as well.
So you got to sign off on conservation?
We have conservation approval and planning board.
You would go to conservation if you were within 100 feet of a wetland.
That was for, that was for a different part of the project, but yes.
But conservation signed off on it?
That's a different issue.
So what's the problem with watershed?
Jeez, you know.
Conservation signed off.
Conservation, it's a watershed protection district. I'm just telling you what I recall, and we'll check.
Yep, so I mean, we, I have the form from the building inspector. If you want that, it says that we need a special permit and.
I'm sure that's in our file. I don't know if there's a decision from the planning board in our file. Did we get a planning board decision?
We have the approval, I have the approval for the planning board here, too. One of the conditions they had was to make sure we get a variance from the zoning board appeals for height. But we fulfilled their requirements as far as the special permit granting authority for the watershed.
I'm just asking if you may need another variance. I'm not 100% sure on that, so we'll have to look into that. I don't know. I don't know. I'm going to look into it. We'll have to look into it.
I guess, where would you, what do you think you might need a variance for?
Any construction within the watershed protection district, I believe.
You need a special permit for any work within the watershed protection district, and there are various requirements. General zone, non-discharge zone, non-disturbance zone.
Oh, okay.
And there are regulations for each of them.
And which zone are you following in?
We're mostly in the general zone.
Oh, you're not in the non-disturbance zone?
Correct.
Okay.
What do you mean by mostly?
We have a little bit.
That's helpful.
We have a little bit of work right here in the non-discharge zone. We are not doing any work in the non-disturbance zone.
Okay.
We went through.
We didn't have, we don't have it in our record. That's why I'm asking. I don't think, I don't think it's in our zoning file.
He, excuse me, he's just asking so you can go forward. It's not, it's not being.
No, I understand, but I mean, we went through.
If you require another variance, then we just want to have it all covered.
We went through two months of permitting to the planning board, and then to now here we need a variance for the planning board?
I appreciate that, but I wasn't at any of your planning board, none of us were. You're here now, so it's not in our file. I don't know what to tell you. That's why I'm asking. So, okay, so you're not, you're in the general zone of that district, you're not in the discharge zone. Okay, that's helpful.
Well, we are in the watershed protection district, absolutely.
Okay, but you're not in the discharge. That's fine.
Correct.
So how many feet, how far away from the lake are you?
How far from the lake?
Yeah.
That's 12, almost 1300 feet.
Great, okay.
So if I can, just so I understand, so we're here for a height variance?
I know, that's what you asked.
But so as part of the planning process, do you always review every project to make sure it doesn't need a variance? I guess I'm just confused.
Well, we're having a public hearing.
No, I understand that.
So you're here because of your request?
Right, for a height variance.
Yep.
And so I think if we were, I'm just hoping this, because you're questioning the watershed protection permitting process.
You may have answered my question on that. It sounds like maybe you're okay on that.
Okay.
I mean, I.
Just bringing it up.
I'm just asking. Just like I said, I don't have your planning board file, so all we have is what's before us.
So did that partially answer some of the information about the soils and the shapes or?
Well, I understand what you want to do. Do you guys have any questions?
I mean, I'd like to see a topography plan to see the actual slope, what you're saying, and just to see that and, you know, see the actual existing building, the height of that. I'd like to see what's around you. Is there anything else that's 48 feet? I mean, you don't want something that's going to be, everything's one story, then all of a sudden you have these three stories sticking out in the middle.
So we do have, we do have one printout here. So this is a view of some of the other buildings. So that's the gym next to it, the dining hall there. This is the theater. It's about the buildings on the campus.
Is the gym higher or?
Port, well, one portion that's sort of off the volleyball court. I don't know if it's actually higher, but it's still a tall volume, so.
Would this be the highest building on the property, or is there something higher? Just visually?
The Science Building would.
Yeah. But the Science.
Is it visually?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's on a hill. Some of the other buildings, the Science Center might be taller, but it's down, not on the hill, so.
When was that built?
The Science Center, 2008. And it also does not have the gable roof, so the walls are certainly taller.
Yeah, it has flat roof.
Yeah, I definitely think the plan's helpful for the record. You know, sometimes with projects like this, we like to visit and just see, try to visualize exactly what you're doing and what the height is. And, you know, sometimes it's very helpful to see what's there and what's coming down.
Yeah, and these are all from a sketch-up 3D model, and if we can be there, we can spin you around in the modeling, give you a walkthrough of this wall.
If that's something you're open to, the board has certainly done that in the past.
Yeah.
Do you know?
In a day and time, we'll be there.
Sure. Are there any abutters here as it relates to this project? I think not. We would like to ask, anyone that got notice? She thinking of topography?
Yeah, I think that, again, a topography plan for the existing height of what's there.
And that's the existing height of the existing barn and the other buildings that are going to be demolished.
Yes, just to have, I mean, if you're replacing a high, you know, a low.
And so my understanding is the way the height was measured, Mr. Belanger, was the average grade around the building?
That's correct. What happens is, I understand correctly.
It's okay. You don't have to. It's okay. It's okay.
Do you think, if you can correct me, the height from one grade to highest ridge is somewhere around 61 feet on one side? Because they're connecting the two buildings together, and they have separation walls. But proposed and existing is all taken as one building that's complete.
Okay.
And when you take the average calculations, that's why you have the difference.
Sure. So there's definitely some difference in grade there.
Yes, there is.
Yeah. So I think if we can understand that grade difference a little bit more, that might help, you know, be what drives the, you know, what's driving the variance.
If we're going to do a site walk, you'll really understand.
Yeah, sure.
Absolutely. And I can just quickly touch upon it, what we have this plan here to look at. You may not have it in your package. But for orientation, Great Pond Road is up here, the lake way down here. So this is a main driveway through the campus, dining hall, the existing art center here. So this is the high side of the building. So I think we have about a 20, 24-foot height here on the front side. And then as you continue down, this section of the building is a little taller than this section, plus we lose the grade change. So the highest difference in elevation is down here, where we have the 61 feet there. And then it varies all throughout the areas there, so.
And what I can also, what I can show you is, bring this over, a view of the site that's analogous to this image right here. So if you look at that point right there, that's similar to that, which is the barn. So the barn is much higher on that side, and it's about, what were we saying, was above Main Street? About 40 feet, 40 feet above Main Street. And then that's what's being removed, and so our volume of the theater is back here. So that's where you see this larger portion of the building.
So this was not provided to us? This was in?
But it's still kind of a guess on the height, right?
Yeah, we can get.
And the grade does, it looks like the grade changes?
Yeah, it slows down across the site.
Sure.
And that's where you see that retaining wall there and that slope down there. If it helps, we can, can we sort of amend our submission to include those docs or?
Oh, yeah, it's not going to be closed, so you can present.
Okay, so we could add some support.
So I think what might be helpful is if you guys are amenable to coming back in May, we can get that letter, you know, in terms of the authority from the land title holder. And then you could coordinate a visit to take a look at for those who wants to go and understand the topography a little more.
Just for the record, I don't like getting something as intense and as complex as this plan at the meeting because I like to look at it prior and I like to, if you could submit it prior to the meeting so we can review it. I mean, if you're going to present me, you know, a 10-page plan, it's hard for me to be prepared and look at it and give you an informed decision.
Sure.
That's just me.
You're right.
That's been me for 20-plus years, so that's me not going to be changing.
Mr. Belanger has not changed that view in a long time.
20 plus?
20 plus. I wasn't going to say it. All right, I mean, I think that's very helpful, and, you know, we could, if the board's so inclined, we could agree to continue to the meeting.
Just to be clear, I mean, what I would like is the other building heights, a picture of what's there.
Sure.
If you could, I mean, that's not, it's just visually, visually. What else?
Anything relevant that you want in our record?
The top of plan.
Anything relevant.
It should go into the record.
Definitely the top of plan and replace existing theater. That's what I have, and I think the height, more of the height.
When you're providing the topographic information, I would suggest also just being clear about existing person's grade.
Sure.
With any of that.
Sure.
So.
Did you want to check on the watershed variance, special part?
You know what, I'm fairly satisfied, to be honest, in terms of that zone. We'll double-check the file if anything comes up.
We can submit the approval, too, for you, and make that part of the package.
That'd be great, yeah.
That's helpful because then we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Then we're all on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I spoke. Does anyone else want to see anything else?
All right, if we're all set, we could hear a motion to continue. What's the May, May 9th? Is that the date?
I'll make a motion to continue to hear it to May 9th.
May 9th.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, stay continued, and I'll just have a phone for you to sign.
The office will coordinate with us as far as a site walk with.
Yeah, Merrill is, you know, she's great. She helps keep this whole ship together, so. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. I just misplaced my agenda. Did I take? Did I seriously just lose that? Did you take my agenda?
No, Church Street is next to that.
Oh, Church Street, okay. All right, I guess we'll get to Church Street next. Can't find my agenda. Did you take it?
Church Street.
No, no, because I wrote it on mine.
Okay, Church Street. Okay, Mr. Caffrey, we'll open the hearing for Church Street.
Matt Caffrey, representing.
He has to be the first.
Notices hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts on Tuesday, April 11, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. to all parties interested in the petition of Edward G. Collin for property 5658 Church Street, map 041.0 parcel 040, North Andover, Massachusetts, 0845 in the GB zoning district. This is an appeal of the building inspector's determination that the use of the property is in violation of Section 4.131 of the zoning bylaw and the issuance of a cease and desist order to cease operating a landscaping business at 5658 Church Street. Applications supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday for the hours 8 to 4, Tuesday from the hours 8 to 5:30, and Friday from 8 to 11:30 by order of the Board of Appeals, Albert P. Mansley III, Esquire Chairman.
Okay, great, thank you. So, Mr. Caffrey, just so you know, Mr. Caffrey, before you get started, you know, we're a five-person board tonight. We have five regular members and one alternate, Attorney Jacobs. So I believe all regular members are here and present. This is a different kind of, we hear these occasionally. They don't come in, the building inspector appeal. So they do come in. They do require four votes to overturn. But we'll see where we are in terms of what you're looking for. Did you submit requested findings in terms of findings that you're looking for us to make?
Yes, I did, yes.
Okay.
They should have those, and if you don't, I have an extra copy, one extra copy.
It's the March 20th, sorry. Okay, so the way I think we'll handle this is we'll give you an opportunity to talk. We'll give Mr. Belanger an opportunity to present anything he wants to present, and the board's exhausted that. If there's any relevant input from statutory abutters, abutters within 300 feet that I noticed to be here, we'll give you an opportunity to talk to. Just be mindful that we do have a lot on the docket tonight. That's not to take away from anybody's right to be heard, so everyone's going to get their chance, but.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Matt Caffrey. I represent Ted Collin, who's the owner of 5658 Church Street. This is an appeal of the building inspector's cease and desist order to Mr. Collin regarding his landscaping business. Before, and I am mindful of time, Mr. Chairman, before I begin, I do have supplemental materials. I'd like to give anyone in the audience an opportunity to see them. These consist of a letter of support from Mr. Donald R. Elliott, as well as a petition that's been signed by 14 North Andover residents and six photographs of the property as it is, as it was on Sunday of this week, this past weekend. So I'm happy to.
Can you give a copy to Mr. Belanger? Mr. Belanger would need it.
Yep, I'd be happy to show Mr. Belanger first and then.
So. And then you have them for us for the record?
I'm going to hand those, that just came to me tonight. The petition came to me tonight.
Oh, I see.
But I do have the photos. I have several sets of those. I'm happy to circulate those to the board while Mr. Belanger's looking at them.
Well, I, so, all right, so we'll put them in, we'll put them in the record in terms of whatever you want us to take, and, you know, we'll review them, you know, so that's, that's fine.
Are the signatories abutters? These are, some of them are abutters and some are not. Each has listed their address. So there are 14 of them, and I'll ask the board to take a look. This is a petition in support, moral support, if you will, to allow Mr. Collin to continue to operate. These are all folks who know him and are aware of his business and his operation. All right. So these are the same photographs, Collins 1 through 6, that Mr. Belanger has. Oh, great.
So we'll mark them 1 through 6.
Can we see them?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, you guys can have them first.
Yeah. Let's get a little lookysee.
Whichever ones we're going to take, I just want to make sure they're the right ones because I'll mark them and we'll put them as received.
That's fine.
Put them in the file.
That's fine. All right, if you're ready, I'll go ahead and just.
Yeah, we're ready.
I'm going to do as brief a presentation as I can because I think all of this is laid out fairly neatly in our written appeal. So again, this property, many of you are probably familiar with Church Street, which is right downtown. It's a general business district, and Mr. Collin has lived at that property since 1969. His parents, 1970, his parents bought the property. And as laid out in his affidavit, which is attached to our appeal, Mr. Collin has operated a landscaping business from that property since 1976. So one of the things that I think we have to sort of, and I want to make sure the board is thinking about this as we have, there are probably three moving parts to this appeal. The first is the allegation by the building inspector that there was debris and other material detractors around the property on his inspection on December 20th. And without getting into the details of what the inspector saw, his characterization of that material, I think as you will agree that my client's actions since then, which are evidenced in the photographs you have in front of you, have been to clean all that up. I think the property looks obviously in order according to the photographs as of Sunday. property looks obviously in order, according to the photographs as of Sunday. And I don't believe that that any longer, even if it was a condition that existed at the property at the time the inspection was made, on January 20, December 20th, is any longer an issue at the property. So the first issue, the first moving part, was the condition of the property. We think we've addressed that.
Okay.
The second was the parking of a commercial vehicle at the property during the inspection. And again, we have, that vehicle is a vehicle that Mr. Collin uses both for personal use as well as in his business. And that vehicle has been, and is currently being parked, because it's a commercial vehicle, around the back of the property with the other commercial vehicles. So we think that we've dealt with that issue. The meat of this appeal, frankly, members of the board, has to do with the zoning status of the property. And I don't want to lecture the board on the zoning code, that's not my job. I'm going to make, I'm going to point out three things that I see, and then I think they're self-evident in the zoning statute, zoning bylaw, but they are the core of our appeal. The first is that we're in a general business district. And in a general business district, office uses are permitted. And in fact, if you look at the summary of use table, business and other office uses are permitted, as well as contractors' yards. And in fact, that's what we have going on in this case. We have a business office for Mr. Collin's business, which is a landscaping business. We have a yard, which is, contains equipment and other material that he needs to use in his business, which is a classic contractor's yard. This is all laid out in the table of uses, and I'll ask the board if they, obviously they can refer to that themselves. So these fall squarely within the general business district in the nature of what we expect to see in the general business district. And again, I'd ask the board to take a look at the kinds of businesses that are permitted in the GB district, but things like, you know, paint, auto paint facilities and this sort of thing are actually allowed in the GB district. I'm not saying that's what we are, but I'm saying that the nature of the beast here is that the general business district is for business, and that's what we have going on. So that's the second piece of the puzzle as far as we're concerned. And I, in terms of how I get to that particular conclusion, I'll note that under Section 4.131, a landscaping business is permitted as, quote, "a mercantile activity," which relates to trade, and I've given the board a definition of mercantile, not involving manufacturing.
4.131.
4.1311. So this involves, our business involves or relates to the trade of landscaping. That's what we do. We're a landscaper.
4.131.
4.131, yeah, 1311. And if you look at the language there, it specifically allows for that. So we believe that we're squarely within the general business district classification for.
That's 4.136, the watershed protection division.
Yeah, please, thank you. And then, lastly, even if somehow we didn't fall right within the allowed uses as of right in the general business district, which we do, we've laid out, I think, an undisputed case that Mr. Collin's business predates the zoning code in terms of those use limitations. We are a pre-existing non-conforming use. Mr. Collin has been there since 1976, and I have not received from the zoning, rather, from the building inspector's office or from Town Council, anything to the contrary. It doesn't appear to be a dispute that Mr. Collin has, in fact, been at the property since that time. So I would ask the board to reverse the decision of the zoning, of the building inspector. I have provided a request for specific findings in my letter of March 22nd, and all of those kind of follow my argument tonight, which are that these are the key aspects of why it is that we are in allowed use in the GB district. And then I want to just address one other thing that came up, not in the building inspector's decision in his order, which is extremely limited. If you look at his order, it's a very narrow order. But it has come up in my discussions with Town Council and the building inspector, which relates to the rental units that are at that property. And there are rental units at that property. And those, again, are pre-existing non-conforming. Mr. Collin's parents bought that property in 1970. Those rental units have been there ever since, and there's just no basis that I have been able to find, and I've certainly made mistakes in my life, but no basis for calling them anything but a pre-existing non-conforming use. So they can continue until some evidence is produced that they're not legal at that location.
Are you being fined?
I have been, we've been threatened, Mr. Chairman, with fines of up to $1,000 a day. Mr. Collin has ceased operating his business as a groundskeeper. However, he does plow for North Andover. And I want to point out that you'll see some plows in those photos. And you're, I want the board to be aware, the reason that there are four or five plows in that picture is because Mr. Collin plows for the town. That's what he does. One of his, what do landscapers do in the off-season? This is one of the things they do, and he needs those.
Just for a point of clarification, you can park a vehicle in the driveways, right?
That's what we're doing.
Have you been told you can't park a vehicle that has a plow on it?
A little unclear, Mr. Chairman. I believe the overall, if you look at the building inspector's decision, the order, it references just commercial vehicles that he saw. I have interpreted that through my meetings with him and with Town Council to mean, no, they don't, the concern is a commercial vehicle parked in front of the residence. That seems to be the issue.
On the street?
On the street. That seems to be the issue.
How much parking do you have within the lot itself?
Quite a bit, Mr. Chairman. That photo that shows the trucks parked in a row, we can get, we own, my client owns all the way to the.
When you say that photo, let's just, number three?
Number.
Because I got six of them.
Yeah, Collin, three.
Okay.
And if you can see, that truck, the box truck, which is located to the far side, that's still on Mr. Collin's property. All of that area is available for trucks.
Where do your tenants park?
Tenant will park, we just have, we've just got our first tenant in a while, and that tenant is parking on the street right now, out in front, like other people do. I took photos of the street specifically so that you could see that other folks are parking on the street. That's what.
How many tenants do you have? Is it a three-family?
We have a one, and it's a one, yes, he lives in one unit, and then there are two other units on the other side.
So it's a three-family, with how many bedrooms in each unit?
Two, one on each, four on the other side. My side has two bedrooms, three bedrooms.
So you need six parking spots for that house?
I think you would if you were bringing it online today, but we're not. This is a pre-existing non-conforming use.
What happens in the wintertime when they're going to take the cars off the street?
Sorry, again?
What happens in the wintertime?
When they take the cars off the street?
When the cars have to go off the street.
Offside parking, both married got it for her tenants, both married severely, so it's odd side parking in the winter. She got it for her tenants, because her tenants don't have a place to park, too.
Okay, so just, so the parking goes, so you have, how many bedrooms? You have two units?
Two units, one bedroom each unit.
Two units with one bedroom each. And then how many bedrooms?
On my side, I have two on the second floor, and an attic room that's kind of like a bedroom, needs to be repaired.
Sounds like four.
Are the other two units rented out?
No, one of the other units is rented out. One is vacant.
One person, one car.
One person, one car.
It matters how many bedrooms, depends. It could be rented out tomorrow, you don't know. So I drove by on my way here. I didn't look like that. I saw seven trucks in the driveway with numerous plows. I don't know where your tenants are going to park, and that's on the side street. I specifically drove by on my way here just to see what it would be, and I did count seven trucks.
I don't.
With plows in the way as well. So it was not, and there was a little, there was a little more debris than what you do have in the picture. So it was.
But you have, but you have garages too in your picture, so I'm a little, so I'm a little.
And that's a side.
Is the garage yours behind the plows?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's got lawn equipment and other material.
But they are garages, right?
Yes.
In the context of, so is there, is there a parking plan? Do you have a parking plan or a site plan that's been done to show existing?
So we had, we submitted to the building inspector a plan, a self-sketched plan of kind of how we wanted to park the vehicles. And I'm going to let the building inspector speak for himself. The response was we needed to have a survey done or some kind of plot plan done to scale. And frankly, the answer is we haven't had time to do that, and it's very expensive, and it's a very costly thing to undertake, but.
You'd have to do it after the fact. I mean, you're not applying for anything.
We're not. We're in a position here, and I, thank you, we're in a position here where I believe we are pre-existing non-conforming use, or we are in allowed use. This is a contractor's yard, and that's what it is. And contractor's yards have trucks in them, and they have material in them, and that's what they look like. And I'm having, I guess I'm having an issue trying to understand how this yard, which looks like a contractor's yard, has to look different than that. And that's kind of where we're coming from.
Did a contractor's yard have to be parked in the back? Is that the, is that what I, because this is on the side. So, and the other issue that I'm having is because it is a three-family, and you do have the potential to have tenants in there, to have six additional cars that would have no place to park. You only have two in the front of the house, and that's it. So, and then because this is all trucks and gear for the contractor's yard, which is rightfully so, there's no place for them to park.
So perhaps, perhaps the board wants to see some, something from us that would indicate how we would handle a situation. Should it come up, where we have additional tenants?
But in your existing use, how are you using it again in the context of the building? How is the building being used in terms of the drive of parking?
The parking is, and again, I took these photos, this wasn't staged or anything. I took these photos when I got there on Sunday. I got out of my car, I took a couple of photos, and I got back in my car.
It's 7 o'clock.
And this is how it appeared at that time. And all I can say is that we would, this is how it's being used currently. He's storing these vehicles there. He uses them in his business. And a very important point, every vehicle that you see in this picture is registered with the exception of one, which is being sold. We're going to be down one, you can see the big for sale sign.
I think there's one in the back with a top over it as well, that I don't think is.
A Sander.
A Sander?
Yeah.
So we're trying to make room. We're trying to make room, and our goal is to get rid of at least that truck, which is for sale, which will open up another spot. But if the concern is, I guess what I want to know, and what we're looking for here is, is it, in terms of the intensity of the use, that's one thing. But in terms of whether it's an allowable use, that's something completely different.
It's allowable use as a three-family, and it's an allowable use, and so you have conflicting uses on the property. And you're using it for one thing, but you can use it for another thing. So my issue is, where are these people going to park?
Right.
You can use it for both, and you can use it for both properly.
Right, right.
Can I ask you?
Is my concern.
Have you identified apartment, how they feel with all these vehicles down there?
Well, before we get to the building, I want to let Mr. Caff, because Mr. Belanger's going to get his own opportunity to present it.
And I'm mindful of time.
I just want to keep it even, if that's okay.
Yep, I'm mindful of time, and I don't, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I do see that we're.
No, we don't want to, no.
No, we're not rushing you.
Absolutely not.
We're not rushing you.
Absolutely not.
We're in for the long haul. So we just, I just want to keep it even, because it's kind of like the aggrieved party type situation, you know, you get, everyone gets their equal time to talk.
So I know that there are some folks here who, and I don't know how you do this, whether you open it up to butters to be able to speak.
After Mr. Belanger would present his side of it. So I mean, I guess, you know, we may have, the board may have more questions for you.
Sure. I was hearing a different question from what you were asking, as far as, you know, how's the property being used. I think I heard you answer that the exterior is being used as a contractor's yard, which is an allowed use by the, in the GB by the table. But what I was hearing, and I'm still a little bit fuzzy on it unfortunately, is 56 to 58 Church, the structure, the building itself, is three residential units?
Correct.
Mr. Collin lives in one of those units?
Correct.
Okay.
If you, it's like a duplex.
Yep.
But one side is his, one whole half, and then the other half has two units.
Okay.
In the yard area where the trucks is, is that a separate lot, or is it all one lot?
One lot.
Is it an oversized lot? What's the size of it?
It's a good question. I have the card.
Or the approximate size.
I don't know that off the top of my head.
All right. That's okay. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, it goes right to the, it's surprising, it goes right to the edge.
For the area, it's a larger size. I'm just trying to understand the nature of, one tax bill?
One tax bill.
The house that's on the corner there, as you face the property, there's a house on the corner to the right. How far is that from the lot line?
The one that's, as you're looking at our house, the one to the right?
The one to the right, yeah.
Yeah, it's right on the line. I mean, I'm telling you.
I mean, that house is on its own lot line.
He had to give an easement to his neighbors so they can use a ladder to go up and paint their house. So this lot line is, you know, this is probably an older section of town, I'm guessing. So this line comes right down the side of the building, which is why you see his truck. I should have angled it a little bit differently, but the truck is parked right along that lot line.
Is that the red one?
No, the, no, this is the box, I'm talking about the box truck.
The box truck, okay.
Yeah. So, you know, there are things that we, you know, we look at, and we, you know, I understand, I think perhaps some of the concern is appearance, and I understand that. And we have signaled, tried to signal to the building inspector and Town Council that we'd like to work with them on this, but we haven't been able to get there yet.
So it's a lot of moving parts. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, it seems like there's a lot. So there was a complaint issued that caused, do you know who complained?
I do not. I looked in the file, I didn't see it.
Okay. So you can't, you don't know who's filing at the point?
I don't know that it, I agree with, building inspector made the observation, I think he's right. It doesn't really matter. What really matters is.
You don't think you have a right to confront your accuser?
Yeah.
Because I do.
At the end of the day, at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is get to the end of this, get ourselves back on our feet. This is costing Mr. Collin a tremendous amount of money. He can't work. So there's a serious issue here, a financial issue.
Because he has to cease.
Every day that goes by, we're in, now we're in the season. He should be cleaning yards and such, so.
Well, how, so, there's a cease and desist with respect to this property. How is he able to operate his business in the interim?
He's, he's got a, he goes up to Methuen. He has a trailer up in Methuen, and he'll go and get, you know, one item out of that. But he can't operate out of this property.
Well, he lives there, right?
He does, but the order says cease and desist. No more landscaping.
So if he was to take one of these plows and drive it off the lot and park it somewhere else, he could still use that vehicle, correct?
I, we're in this, we're in the zone.
Why can't you drive it with a plow? I mean, come on. I don't get it.
We were told that it was okay if he plowed for town in North Andover during the last storm, so he did. So that happened. But other than that.
Okay, well, we don't want to prejudge anything, because, you know, I want, I apologize, because I don't want to get ahead of myself. I want to give Mr. Belanger a fair opportunity to present, you know, because he's got a hard role, you know, and it's not an easy job to be the inspector of buildings and to, and to be the zoning enforcement officer. It's a very hard job. It's got a lot of discretion and authority, and he deserves a fair chance to be heard.
And we want to work with him, and we want to work with the town. We're not interested in anything but getting to the end of this so that we can get our business back up and running.
And in your neighborhood as well. I mean, you want to do a nice little triangle to have everything.
Correct. That's the goal.
All right, so just to close out, Mr. Caffrey, your, the findings that you're looking for us to make are what?
They should be in that March 22nd letter. And it basically runs through the six items that we believe the board needs to find regarding the cease and desist order, condition of the property, parking of a commercial vehicle, the zoning status as a landscaping business, as a contractor's yard, and then as the non-conforming use. So we think that all of those findings get us to a place where he continues to operate. We are very well aware we need to operate in a responsible manner and in a reasonable manner, and we're ready to do that. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Belanger, you're welcome to go there or sit over here wherever you're most comfortable, you know, whatever helps, makes it easy, or sit at the table if you want, whatever makes it easy for you.
I think this is the first time you're at our board tonight.
Actually, yes, it is.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're not going to come back after.
I'm the building official. And I do have some copies for everybody as well.
Sure.
If I could pass them out or?
Copies of what?
I have a, one set is a copy of the access card, and then some photos that were taken on the tent as well. I made some copies for everybody.
Mr. Belanger, do we have these in our file?
You don't have an actual one.
No, you do, right here. No, right here. No, you do, right here. No, right here.
Now, we got it.
Right there, sorry. So, I'm still two.
Okay. On this second list? Just another set, several copies. The DBA, that was presented, a report from the Board of Health from 1992. And a builder permit. One of the only builder permits I could find, I was actually tore off on a garage roof.
Get again, one shot.
Caffey, you have all this, right?
Yes.
Mr. Caffey is correct that the, from the initial letter that was written, and the property has been cleaned up, but this, in my opinion, is still a long way to go. And that being said, on the records that we have with the assessor's office, going back, we have, I have it as a two-family, and the assessor puts it as a code, assessor's code is 104, which is for a two-family. All the records and a lot of stuff I'm looking at, it has it as 5658 Church Street. I don't see where it's mentioned, where it says another number for another unit or something. So, on my records, it shows, unless it could be presented to me otherwise, and I'll be more than open to look at whatever the, there is out there. I have it as a one, two-family. And residents in that zone, it's not an allowed use, but it is a legal non-conforming residential use that's there, because the residential part was pre-zoning. The part that makes it in the violation is when the business came in, although that the business is a legal use to come in, it's, it's going into, on a property that has a non-conforming use, which I believe triggers a finding at minimum, because now you're expanding into the property where it has a non-conforming use to begin with. And then you have the contractor's yard, the landscaping business.
But which part of the use is non-conforming?
Residential.
Isn't that allowed under the...
In a general residence zone.
Isn't it loud, allowed?
I don't believe it is.
Residential's allowed under GB, isn't it? As I recall? Let's check.
Is a multi-family...
Section 6 of 4131 says residential use, where such use is not more than 50% of the total floor space in the structure. So, may be allowed, but the code itself is limiting the residential use.
The whole structure is a residential...
So, in general business in the table of uses, it says one family, no.
You can't have one family.
You can't have one family, but you can have multi-family?
It says one family, no. And when you go on to a multi-family, I believe you get the same answer.
Two-family dwelling, no.
Correct.
So, that's the non-conformity? Is there a multi-family? But it can be, but the bio is 50%.
50% of the structure you could have as a residential.
Sure.
If you have the other part in the general business zone, which would be running a business.
Is this part of the Overlake District 2 that was approved a few years back?
I don't believe so.
The downtown Overlake? We don't, okay.
I think it just falls on the skirt of that.
Okay.
So, you want him to choose either a contractor's yard or a two-family?
Well, if you have the two, you need to go for a finding. And then what I've asked for was a plot plan. The reason why I asked, one thing I asked for was a plot plan, is so I could see the layout of the land. Do we have enough land in there? Because I believe the land, when you get into the general business zone, it minimizes a lot, which would be triggered in that part. Setbacks on some other issues may not.
But you, but you agree those uses are pre-existing, though, from the zoning? It was obviously residential and fellow...
Well, the residential part, the legal non-conforming.
It's, you know, obviously the GB zone, whenever it got approved, it overlapped.
Well, I don't have permits for anything at all, as far as the business goes. All I have is a statement from Mr. Collins that says, and I, and I don't have any reason not to believe him, that in 1976, even though zoning started in 72, but in 1976, that he had, had a, his vehicle, and he was using the trunk of his vehicle to, you know, put lawn mowers and stuff like that, and he was fixing them.
But you don't know when this became the GB zone. This could have been a residential zone in 76, right? Or whatever. I mean, the general business zone is...
That would make it non-conforming.
That's what makes, that's what drives it non-conforming, yeah.
And then in 1980, he states this when he, he got his first truck. I'm assuming it was a truck with a plow, so he could do both landscaping and plowing.
Sure.
Which would fit more with what he has today. And since then, it's expanded. And over the past several years, there's been complaints for different things, with the apartments from the health department, or also with the vehicles in the street and stuff that, fashion, where due to the expansion of the business, finding a place to park. So, the residences that, for that space with the two, with the two units, would require four parking spaces. I don't, I get to see a plot plan to show me the four parking spaces. And then the floor layouts, there's another thing I, I asked for on the building, and that's so I could see, okay, what part is the apartments, and what part is a business, or where is it functioning from as far as that part? He doesn't have a setup outside to run his office or business or anything, so it needs to be running from inside. So, I don't have anything that gives me a layout of anything. Without the benefit of permits or anything to that fashion, or an occupancy for a business, which would have been quieted back since even far back in 75, and opening up a business.
Like a DBA certificate?
No, you would get building permits from the building department when you're opening up a business, to have a sticker of occupancy.
But you would get that de facto, if he already existed? He would...
Well, if it was prior to 1975, yes. But in 1975, that was even required at that point, in the state of Massachusetts.
Well, for whatever reason, he wasn't required then?
Well, I don't have any records of any business there at all, 12 years, so I'm taking for his word that, okay, yes, he did start in 76 at one part, working out of his trunk, running a business, and then in 1980 comes along, and he bought himself a truck, and he's succeeding, and it's a wonderful thing.
But there was, there was a point in time when, when the community development was occupying a, a structure in town, leasing a structure, and it flooded, and there were a lot of building records that were destroyed, or flooded out or thrown out.
I'm, I'm not aware of this, or if I don't have...
My institutional memory is that that happened. I'm not saying that there's any, I, I don't know what records.
Well, and, and I'm putting that on, this is on, you know, on...
If he has them, he'd produce a...
Okay. Show me something that I can work with in that part of it. And if I had a plot plan, and I could see that we have the, you know, parking for the tenants, and then he has parking to put his vehicles, and we could see, then I'd be at least be able to give a, a proper, you know, plan review, and zoning review.
So, the one issue's the parking?
Be more accurate in that part of it. Parking is a, one issue. The other issue would be, there's two units there. I found out recently that in the appeal, where it said three units, there was another letter that was stated back, that it was from Mr. Caffey, it was two units in the building. I don't know which one it is.
So, that's, that's a different issue, though, right?
Well, it's a combined issue.
As it relates to operating his business, the three units, how, how does that tie to the operation business?
They're two in the same, because we're on the same property with the, with the residential structures, where, where the combined, it's a mixed use. So, how much is allowed to be the residential at 50% of the building, and then the other 50% could be the business? So, by bringing in the business, you're triggering a finding for that, and which would have to go before they get approved for it. And that's the part I don't have. The third part where I see, as far as visual from the street is an observation, which is purely my observation at the time, because I didn't enter onto the property, was there are three garage bays. They do look like they're packed with debris, and I don't have anything to say otherwise that they are. Although, as you could see in the photos here, you do have some of the vehicles, you do have some of the repairs, or some of the stuff that they do work on the vehicles on the property. You know, I still don't have anything on the garage bays on what's in there. So, one of my concerns in, in the Commonwealth, but more so here in the community, is the life safety issues of the property and the, you know, the people, and that, as we all have in that fashion. And that's the part I wish to satisfy in that. And I need the three of them to connect to do so.
You, when you, well, you lost me there for a second. Which parts do you need to connect?
Well, I need the plot plan that shows me the layout of all the parking is.
Yeah.
I need the floor plans that, that show me what the layout in the building is, and I don't have any idea what's going on with the garages.
But how do you need that after that?
I haven't been, I haven't had a chance to go through and do a walkthrough, which typically I do with the fire department and the health department, to determine...
If someone was looking for a new permit, I, I understand. But I'm a little fuzzy on the de facto, where he's already existing, that you would need him to do all that stuff and shut down his business. I'm a little fuzzy on that.
Well, the, the only way that, I have, I have the two residential units, which I don't know what's going on there. And I have all these vehicles that are packed in there with the fuel and everything else.
He told you he lives in one of them, right? He lives in one of them.
Yes. So, and then one's not rented. But now it's, is it a two unit or is it a three unit? I don't have any permits for anything. I don't have any, I don't know if things were done correctly. I, there's, I don't...
Do you have any reason to believe that it was built within the past 12 months? Whatever is existing, it's existing, right? So, the question I have is, how far back do you go on something that's existing, just because there's no records?
Well, if I, if I don't have any records to show me, and what I see here is for a two, and now all of a sudden I'm being told there's a three-family, and if the things were done without the benefit of permits, licensed folks or anything to that fashion, well, they would still have to, if there's any work being done over the years, you'd still have to have licensed professionals in there. So, I don't know if there's any fire, life safety issues in there, or anything to that fashion. I don't know what's been done when, you know, you know, there could be five units in there. I, I'm not saying there is. I'm just saying, you know...
You have no, you have no records.
I have no idea of what's in there. And as far as my record tells me, I have a two-family, and I, and then...
Well, there was a permit for a roof that you submitted, right?
There was a permit for a roof for the garage.
Yeah.
That's all I, that's all I have in there.
But does anything, do you observe anything there that looks newly constructed?
Well, my concern is that what's there now, with the, with the vehicles that were there, with the fuel that was there, and a lot of it has been cleaned up on the outside of it, even though the vehicles are all packed in there, some are up on the sidewalk from the photos here the other day, some were parked in front of the house. I still don't know what's in the garage. And then, if you look at one, on the other records that I have here, a note from the health department.
Yeah.
That goes back to 1992. That talks about, and it's still mentioned as 5658. There's no mention of a third unit in, in the structure. And it goes into, if you look at number seven, the stairway to the third floor bedroom, is, you know, the lighting, and another one where the ceilings were coming down and unfinished and cracked. So, I mean, you know, I'm grateful nothing ever happened, and my job is to go out there along with the fire department and the health department. We actually do a walkthrough of these buildings when we see if it's going from a two to a three unit. I looked at it as an illegal unit, in the sense that I don't have any permits, and how it got there or anything else.
But he's not applying for a three family.
Correct, but they're telling me it's there.
Oh, okay.
So, how did it appear?
So, I understand the violations here. I, I get this. But my question is, if there's been no construction to an existing dwelling, what requirement would there be for him to retroactively change it?
I don't know what construction's been there. It was a two, and it became a three. Something had to be done. I don't know this...
Yeah, you suspect that. Okay.
I don't have anything that tells me anything different.
But you don't have anything otherwise either, other than the trucks in there?
Well, I, I do. I have something that says it's a two, and then it came to a three, and I don't have anything in the records that were ever permits or anything else.
But I mean, this, this here...
Well, I know you have unlicensed individuals going through and performing work, and this is some of the things that we're preventing, so we don't have fires, so we don't have other life safety issues, which I hope we don't have anywhere.
But that's different than zoning, though. That's building.
That's correct.
It's a lot of moving parts.
Correct.
My problem is this. Ellen drove by there once. I've driven by there twice in the last two weeks since I got my package. And when I drive through there, or by there, for lack of other words, I don't see our church mouse, okay, can get in between the cars, and, and that big leaf truck, and there's a front-end loader and everything else there, okay? My concern is, is there any gasoline store there? What does the fire department have to say about all of this? Has the fire department been down there?
No, the fire department has not.
Okay, I mean, I see all of these vehicles out there.
Not that I know of, at this point. I can't speak for the fire department.
I mean, you don't think you should call the fire department down there and see what's going on?
Well, I do need to get a hold of the fire department. I'd like to get a hold of, make, make an arrangement so that the fire department, health department, the building department, myself, could take a walkthrough, so we can clarify those life safety issues on that part of it. But as far as the zoning part, I look at it as an illegal unit until it shows me otherwise where I can have there, because I know the other, the first two...
I'm not even concerned about something that happened 25, 30 years ago with all this building stuff. I'm concerned about the plows that are there now. Okay, I'm concerned about the, the implowing for the town, coming back at 2:00 in the morning, done plowing, and all these trucks line up, and they drop their plows, and they disturb the whole neighborhood. Okay, I think that's the crux of the matter, okay? Okay, there's all these plows dropping trucks, guys getting out of things, saying they're tired, where are you going to go for coffee? And at 2:00 in the morning, you know, a normal conversation is loud. Okay? I mean, I see all, all of these vehicles. She counted seven. I didn't, you know, there's like 10, 12 vehicles there. Right? I mean, it's a contractor's yard, to say the very least. Does a contractor's yard belong in that neighborhood?
Actually, in a general, general business owner, contractor's yard would be an allowed use.
It's an allowed use.
But there's also other provisions when a contractor's yard is in the use.
So, let him satisfy the fire department and all the other codes, and see if it's a, a applied use. Okay? Somehow, I can't believe all those vehicles.
I'm looking strictly at the zoning part of it.
Satisfy all the fire and building codes.
I mean, so to your credit, I think, I mean, you know, you're not fining anybody. You're simply saying, you work with us in terms of...
Yeah, as I stated at the first meeting, is my intent is not to bring a fine.
Yeah.
It might, I, I, I put down the fine and everything else as part of the process, and for me, that gets the attention, so I can at least get the individuals to come in.
Sure.
So, we can have a conversation, a civil conversation, and talk about, all right, we have a, a situation that may not be the best, or could be worse, or in some are. Where do we go from here to make it better? How do we make it right?
Can I ask a quick question? Now, a cease and desist, this would be the final stage? I mean, I don't think we're quite here yet, isn't it? Don't you need to do a little more than a cease and desist, or was a cease and desist put in place in order to get the attention?
The cease and desist stops what's there.
Correct.
So, that way, until we get everything legal, then, and, with the safety issues.
Would this be the first step, or would this be the last step in the process? Wouldn't you kind of want to work a little more before you did, work a little more with the applicant, with the, you know, the fire department, the safety and the health of, and the well-being of the whole neighborhood, and the applicant as well, before you did the cease and desist?
Well, in some situations, I agree. I would approach it that way. On this one here, I did not. Reason being is, the safety issues, I have some concerns. So, if they're running a business while we're trying to work things out, and something happens, and a safety issue, that's a risk that I'm not willing to take.
Okay.
Not even in a limited...
Unless we can clear it up, then, and if it, if it doesn't become that, then maybe we can clear that up sooner.
I mean, where they're here, where they're here at this, here, yeah, if, where they're here already, my question is, is there a way to give some kind of limited, you know, livelihood stability while the board is in the context of their findings?
Yes. If we can make a time so I can get with the fire department, the health department, and myself, we could do a walkthrough of the property, and then to make, to relieve any of the concerns and the safety issues. of the concerns and the safety issues, then I have no problem on taking that out of there and letting, you know, letting the gentleman run his business. At least this way here, we can work something out and not, not to be a burden.
Because the life, the life safety issues, I'm not, I, you know, I honestly don't know, so I don't want to speak out of turn. But I mean, some of those, some of those issues as it relates to life safety and building code might be beyond our purview. It may not be. I, I want to, I need to look into that a little bit more. I'm thinking that right now, we're a little bit more on the zoning side, and a little bit less on the life safety side, that that's, but that is part of the, but the appeal is the appeal, so I have to digest all of that.
Okay. Now, I understand where you come from, like, on the zoning part of it.
Yeah.
And I, I have to look at the life safety issues the same way as the public safety with the, as the fire department does.
Sure.
That's the main, one of the main reasons why I do what I do.
Right.
That being said, I, I need to clarify some of the zoning issues as well. So, if we could clarify those, but I would like to do a walkthrough with the fire department and the health department, to feel assured that any, if there are any of the safety issues from what they're, that they can satisfy those to be cleared up before you open up a business and then run it. So, that way, last thing I would like, again, the last thing I want to see is running a business and having some of the safety issues, and something get triggered. And if it's a chance in a million, it's not a chance I would like to take.
Yeah, of course.
It's not a chance I would like to take with anybody here on the board, or anybody in the municipality in itself.
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah, but I'm more than willing to work, you know, if the owner has an attorney to do so, get there as quick as we can.
Yeah, it's a hard, it's a hard spot to be in. Did you, did you want to talk?
I guess, I think you answered some of it, but I was, I was just going to ask for more explicit, maybe a little more explicit clarity, if there, if it's possible, in regards to separating the life safety, building code issues from the kind of cease and desist business aspect? Or, I mean, I understand that your point is a mixed use, and you have to look at it that way. But I guess, I'm just looking for some mediation, some way to kind of have a mediation with the, with the property owner to, as it's been kind of mentioned, like, you know, at what point do you, do you start working with them and rein in the cease and...
They, you know, to be fair, Mr. McCaffrey and Mr. Cullen, they have been working with it, did get the vehicles off, they have cleaned up on the front and some of the odds and stuff like that. Unfortunately, there's so much of the vehicles and everything unpacked and I'm in there, and if you have the fuels and other stuff that's there as well, I mean, that's something that the fire department, myself, and the health department have to go down to look at in that part.
I mean, clearly, there's parking.
But they have been cooperating, and they have been working with, you know, as far as, you know, doing the due diligence in that part, and making the effort, credit for that as well. But there are some issues that we still need to take care of.
I guess my, my gut, my gut reaction here on, on some of the requests that have been made in terms of the plot plan, building plans, and I'm not sure if I'm missing something else, but, building floor plans, same thing, I guess. I guess, in, in my opinion, I guess, I would feel that we, we as a board would probably want to also see a plot plan showing parking. However, I would, I would just suggest that the building plan is, is not something really under our purview, because it's, maybe, it might be under yours.
I can interrupt for one moment. The plot plan wouldn't need to be done by a registered land surveyor. The building plans and the floor plans, they, they don't have to be. They can be done on graph paper, as long as they have something to scale, there should be a rough layout, label, what's what, and all that stuff. That would satisfy that requirement, is that makes it easier for what you're asking?
Yeah, I think that's, that's implying.
Yeah, I, I, I've mentioned that in the past, and I have no problem, but that would be a, you know, very reasonable, and it's logical to do it. The intent is not to put the burden, the intent is to alleviate any safety issues and correct the zoning issues.
If they wanted to, I mean, I think the question for us is really more threshold issues at this point, in the context of, you know, I don't need, I'll be very candid, I don't know if I'm prepared to render my own decision tonight. There's a, I, I have to understand the code a little bit better and separate the issues in my own mind, you know, just one member here, but, I mean, I think the threshold issues really are, you know, is the use allowed? You know, we have to answer, before we would make any requirements on an applicant to do anything, we would simply answer the context of the findings that are requested. And I think that's all that's really asked of us, because there's no petition to do anything. If we, you know, if, if, if the, if the appeal fails, or in part, or in whole, then, you know, the, then the applicant's remedy is to go back to the building inspector and give him what he wants, or take up another appeal, you know? So, I, I want to be a little bit more clear on the legal issues, which is why I'm, I don't think I'm frankly prepared to vote on anything tonight myself. What about you guys?
One of my concerns, not saying that I'd be prepared to vote if I were to vote on it, but I think one of the issues kind of becomes a fact of the cease and desist. I think that, understanding that the board's not prepared to vote on it, and wanting more information and looking into things, I think we do have to take into consideration that somebody's livelihood and ability to work and make a living and pay their taxes in the town of North Andover is being limited. And I understand that your time is valuable, and you probably have a full schedule, but I kind of feel this is something that should be put on the top of the priority list, if it's something that's going to be held.
And I can agree with you that. Just because I have a busy schedule doesn't mean that someone has to be at home trying to make things right. And I'm more than, more than willing to sit down and work out how we can resolve this as soon as we can. I have no problem with that at all.
I mean, clearly, there's room for parking. The question is how much, you know, in the context of how it's being used? You know, there are those bays. Are you using them the best way? I don't know. It looks like there could be parking as well.
One quarter.
So, I mean, I think there's a lot of issues there. In terms of the other issues, you know, the records that either exist or don't exist, I don't know, you have a pre-existing use, so that's a whole nother issue, and then the life safety issues are separate from that. So, there's just so many things that we have to consider here, you know, it'd be, I think in the interim, it would be helpful if there could be some kind of way that the gentleman could operate, you know, at least in a limited fashion, until the board renders a decision to, but that's, that's not our call, I guess. That's your call.
I'd be willing to sit down, and we could discuss and see how we can come to some kind of resolve, and I'll work, I'll work, I'll work with you as far as to get there as quick as we can, knowing that, you know, we do have some extra to take care of some of the resources, too. It's a two-way street. I have no problems.
So, you would, would we continue this until your next meeting? I would give you a chance to think about the issues. In the meantime, I could talk to the building inspector about getting some type of permitting, temporary permission to operate at the site.
The building inspector is within their authority at any point in time to give you any relief that he sees fit. You've appealed the totality of what's happened, so you have a right to be here. So, he, he's well within his authority to sit down with you anytime he wants. There's just so many moving parts for us, you know, because of the likelihood that we render a decision that one side likes and the other side doesn't like, it's always likely there could be another appeal of what we do. So, we have to understand kind of where we are. And I understand there's a neighborhood factor, too, and I don't want to give, I don't want to tell the neighbors who have been sitting here so patiently, that they, they can certainly be heard if they want to, but that's just in terms of, I'd like to collect all the information we can tonight, and then I think we'd have to continue it to May. There's just, there's just too much.
Can we hear from the butters?
Yeah. Is there any butters that want to be heard?
Well, thank you for your time. I do appreciate it.
I have a couple of questions.
Are you one of the but...
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Belanger, thank you so much for...
Thank you, it's nice meeting you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Church Street's two ways, right?
You're going to have to come up to the podium and say your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Robinson.
Excuse me, may I take it off your hat, please?
Yeah, Kevin Robinson, 57 Water Street. Church Street, it's a two-way street, okay? And what deems a duplex general business? Is that, is that grandfathered in, that he ran the business that long, that...
The zoning district, the zoning district, where it falls within the zoning map. So, Mr. Belanger can probably answer that question.
So, is that part of the, is Church Street part of the business overlay district?
Yeah, like I said...
Sure.
I want to make sure he is. The, yes, it is. That property is actually in a general business zone, and those are allowed uses within the general business zone of the business.
Okay. And it's a two-way street?
It is.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Is it?
It isn't.
I think it is, too.
Well, if it wasn't, then I went down there.
I think I've driven, I think I've driven both ways on Church Streets, so... Yeah, so there's a lot. I mean, I, I understand, I understand everything that's going on, so we have to deal with it. What do you think?
I, I agree, there's a lot, a lot going on. What I would ask, somehow, Attorney Caffrey, is if we could find a piece of paper, because that's the language that I speak, I'm an attorney such like yourself, and so is Mr. Chair.
I use the term loosely.
Paper speaks volumes to me. So, to the extent that we can find a piece of paper from 1976 or pre-zoning that says that landscaping was there, maybe there's a, a canceled check, just give me something to hang on to that says the landscaping business was there.
I can give you a testimony of people who know it was there. I have people in the audience who have lived here, and can tell you that that business was there.
And on the record, that's equally valuable. So, to, to the extent that that can be arranged, that'd be great. The other, again, in the, in the piece of paper world that I live in, and the language that you speak, I'd love to find some kind of resolution for this two fam, three fam kind of thing, because residential isn't allowed use in the, or is not allowed use in the GB. It's allowed in the, in the language of the code itself, but there's a difference between single-family, two-family, and three-family. And I'd love to find, again, something to hang my hat on, please.
Understood. I'll, I'll take a look. Thank you.
So, with that, I mean, if you, were there no butters for tonight? We have the letters and the record that you submitted. Is there anybody that wants to say anything tonight or not? No pressure. Okay.
I will. I will.
Okay.
All right. My name's Laurie Giaquinta, and I'm from North Andover. And I've known Teddy probably, I don't know, 40 years or more, and I've known he's had his business for at least 40 years. My oldest son worked for him, and my youngest son works for him now, so he doesn't have a job now. So, but I just wanted to say that, you know, Teddy's a great guy, he's been a family friend to my family, and, I don't know, that's all I have to say, but...
Okay. Thank you, sure.
He's 35 years, and I remember that he's had that business since we were younger, you know? He's had it that, that long, that business. And the other thing is, he does a lot of stuff for those people in that neighborhood. He'll plow their driveways, he'll get his bobcat out and dig them out, just to help those people out. And I mean, and now they're not appreciating what he's done for them in the past, and every time they've asked him to do something, to help him out, he's never said no.
Sure.
He's always right there to do it, you know? I just want to say that, because he is, he's an excellent guy, you know? He's a very good resident of the town of North Andover.
Sure.
And he's been a longtime resident of town of North Andover, and he's very well-known, and he's very well-appreciated, too, you know? Okay, thank you.
Can we get your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Uh, my name's David Coakley, and I live right here at Sixth McCabe Court. Thank you.
And our record does not reflect a name complaint, so...
Okay.
We don't have a named complaint.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? What is fine?
Now, this is a, this is a forum, just to remind everyone, just to, this is your neighborhood, this is your voice, that, you know, people need to understand, this is your time to speak for your neighborhood, what you want, what you don't, you know, that's why it's here. It's a public forum for everyone to speak out for, for things.
We also understand why people speak or don't speak, too. I mean, we, we get it. We get it, you know?
Hi, Gary Rogers, 59 Church Street. I live right across the street from Ted. Ted's been a friend of mine for years. That friendship's being tested right now, because I couldn't side with his petition. I actually plow for him. I'm a retired carpenter, and I do plow. I get in those plows, and I plow for the town. So, it, it's kind of difficult for me to say this, because he's been a friend, but I have some concerns that kind of went on deaf ears, and I know he's, he's been in business for years, but recently, I've seen the, the yard get cleaned up, and I spoke with Teddy, and I said, I'm thrilled with what's happened with your yard, and my main concern is that it doesn't go back to the way it was. That's, that's my first concern. As a taxpayer, my property value is affected, and the quality of my neighborhood.
Sure.
And a couple other concerns are along the lines of the noise, it's a noisy business, and the hours that, so I'd like to see some restrictions placed on that. Not that, I don't want to see him go out of business, I want him to continue in business, but this is a time where I think some changes could be made for the neighborhood. We are a residential neighborhood, he is a business on that side, but I, I just have some reasonable concerns about the hours of the business.
Sure.
And that's all.
Are you still working for him?
Um, yeah.
I did plow the last small one.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. But, but I think they're, I think they're reasonable concerns, and I, I don't know if you can address those. I'd like to see you give him his permit back, but if there can be some kind of restrictions, because it's a quiet residential neighborhood, except for that, that noisy business, when trucks pull in, when he starts up two-cycle engines to be tested.
I don't know if we have the authority...
When he shoppings his blades at nine at night, in the summertime.
I'll be honest with you, I don't know the answer to that question. I appreciate you coming and talking, I really do.
And I'm an immediate, like, other people don't live right around it, but I, I'm right across the street, and a couple people beside him, we're affected the most.
I, I think our town does have standard on, standards on when to operate, hours of operation.
There are some standards in the...
Yes.
I don't have them exactly in front of me.
I, I think it's 7:00, you can start, 8:30, you can draw, you know, there's some really specific standards.
But I don't know how they relate to contractors' yards in the GB zone.
Yeah.
So, that's something we can look into.
But again, I don't want Teddy to lose his business, but I feel like this is a forum I can, you know, it went on deaf ears. I did speak to Teddy privately, but it didn't seem to be a concern, but that is a concern of mine, and I think it's a reasonable concern.
Okay.
And I think when you're dealing with, you know, the applicant and everyone around, you can just look into the, the, you know, the operation, the noise.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
I like to be proactive, and it's a two-way street. I'll work with... The main objective at the end of the day is, we get things so we're all in a comfortable place, things are right, so the neighborhood's good. The life safety issues and all that are taken care of as well.
And I want to be clear, too.
And then the hours of limitation, those would be known, so of operation and all that stuff. And you'd be more than happy to call the building department, and I'll get you the exact hours and hours. I just don't have it in front of me to...
And again, I'm a very much person that live and let live. You know, I don't like to get involved in anyone's business unless it affects me negatively. And I think it...
That's like most people, I think, in that part, but yes.
So thank you.
That's understandable.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just as a point of education, because there's no better way to get information out than when you have everybody's attention. And it's worth probably sharing with the gallery and the, you know, the throngs who are riveted to their television watching at home. But the GB district has, you know, a series of much more intense uses allowed as of right than a mere contractor's yard. And this is in no way suggesting, as the building inspector is going to look into, and as Attorney Caffrey has indicated and others have mentioned, that there are certainly hours of operation, and there are noise standards and all those kind of things. But the table of uses is very specific, and allowed, surprisingly perhaps, because I don't look in the GB district all that often, but auto service stations are allowed as of right. An auto vehicle repair and body shop is allowed as of right. A bus garage is allowed as of right. I mean, there are just so many other more intense uses than a contractor's yard. Admittedly, there are vehicles coming in and out, and certainly during plow season. I'm sure, certain that there are some challenging hours for the neighborhood, as well as the folks are actually doing the plowing. So my message is only that, as of right, there are lots of other more intense uses in this plot of land than the contractor's yard.
Yeah, certainly.
Unless there are any more comments, Mr. Chair. It's not my intention to belabor. I'm happy to make a motion to continue to May 9th, I heard. May 9th. Motion to continue, May 9th, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is that agreeable, Mr. Caffrey?
That's agreeable. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we stay and continue, okay? All right, moving right along. All right. Next on our... Excuse me. Next on our agenda is a new public hearing from Mr. Stanley, 58 Country Club Circle, who is seeking to put a ground pool in the R1 district, right? Perhaps in the watershed? Hi. Okay, hold on a sec. Let us get the hearing open for you.
I'm still trying to...
Where is it? Where did I put it? Stanley, or into Stanley.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Town Hall 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, April 11, 2017, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition for Donald Stanley for property located at 58 Country Club Circle, MAP 064.0, parcel 0150, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Section 4.136.3. C, Point Romanate 2.3, for construction of an in-ground pool in the R1 zoning district. A variance is requested under Section 4.136, the Watershed Protection Division, 3, uses and building requirements. See Romanate 2.3, non-disturbance buffer zone of the zoning bylaws. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours 8 to 4, Tuesday, from the hours of 8 to 5:30, Friday from 8 to 11:30. It doesn't say, but it is by order of the Chair, Albert P. Manzi III, Esquire.
Well, let's hope this is a procedure of the... All right, great, so...
So before you go, I'm actually not going to sit on this for reasons I think, you know, my... With my dad, so Alex, you can take over, and I'm just gonna...
Okay, so we'll note for the record.
Drop the mic and leave now.
That was a long time ago.
It was, but he's still soldier of the property, so...
And I don't work there anymore. I'm retired.
But you live there, huh?
I live Dublin.
All right, so Ms. McIntyre is recused. Well, what the record reflects, Ms. Jacobs' son will be sitting in for her. So that still would be a five-person.
Yes.
You need four. You need four. And so... Okay, so welcome.
Good evening. I'm George Zamboros. I'm the lead man of the project. I work with Atlantic Engineering and Survey Consultants. I'm representing Mr. Stanley. And as reading in the article, in the notice, there... What Mr. Stanley is proposing to do is to install... What he'd like to do is install permanent structures inside the non-disturbed zone of the watershed district, specifically a pool, a retaining wall in the fence enclosure, which requires a variance and a special permit.
Who gives you the special permit?
Pardon me?
Who gives you the special permit?
The special permits to the planning board.
From the planning board?
Yes.
The variance is from us?
The variance is from you.
Okay.
And actually, the way the regulations read, we're supposed to receive the variance before we can actually apply for the special permit. However, we have, you know, we did do the filing, and since the planning board was looking for a little bit more information, that wasn't quite ready in time for their previous meeting. We continued the meeting, last meeting, till next week, which will be after your meeting. Plus, at the same time, I think, since the meetings wouldn't be so close together, the intention of the planning board was actually to continue theirs until they heard the results of yours.
So they let you file it?
They did let us file it.
But they're not going to make a decision unless we approve?
But they're not going to decide until after the results of this hearing.
Interesting. Okay, sure.
They indicated what they have done in the past, and maybe I misunderstood what they said, is that they conditioned their... They conditioned a decision subject to the results of the variance. But we do need both. We need the variance and special permit.
So was there a variance granted on this property previously?
There was. I mean, this is the existing conditions plan. There's a lot of lines on here. What puts us in the no-disturb zone is, it's not that we're so close to the lake, but we're close to the bordering vegetated wetland, which is tributary to the lake. This is the edge of the wetland here. The 150-foot distance is right here. So from this line back is the do-not-disturb zone. What was granted back in 2006 are... Actually, I think 2006, there was a minor modification to it. I believe it was maybe a year or two before 2006 was for the garage, which is this structure right here. But this is the existing dwelling. It's the entire site within the watershed district. It's the rear portion that's in the do-not-disturb zone. The limit of fill activity on the entire property right now is this dash line. Everything from here in that direction has been previously disturbed, a lot of which from when the house was originally built. The subdivision was approved in 1998 and tied into the suicidal in the year 2000, so...
They probably told them in '98, "You can't build the pool, because it's in the no-disturb zone."
No, it wasn't. That's when the entire subdivision was built.
I'm being funny.
No.
Yeah. I remember when the subdivision went in. So what's driving the need for the variance to have to put the pool there?
Well, as you're aware, it's a weird shaped lot. It's a two-acre lot. This portion of the lot is three-quarters of an acre. The grade in around the house is elevation 190 to 192. The elevation down here goes down to 166. So between the wetlands, it doesn't continue there. The wetlands actually round back here. But due to the, you know, the narrowness and the, at least the topography, 20, 22 feet deeper than at a lower elevation the way your living facilities is, there's a lot of structures that would have to be installed, which are almost unapprovable just to get down there. So I mean, this part of the lot is, I wouldn't say useless, but I mean, as far as constructing anything in usability other than a natural state, that's about the only thing you'd be allowed to do. There is ledge-out crops in the front. The soils in the area, they're classified as chatfield hollow soils. Those soils, they're sands, talumi sands with shallow bedrock. Obviously, you have a ledge-out crop here. Right in this vicinity here is elevation 192. That's the same elevation what it was prior to the subdivision being built. So what's suspected is that this ledge that's exposed here is probably in this area also.
Clearly, you wouldn't put the pool in the front of the house, right?
You can't put the pool in the front of the house.
But...
The grade differential from the house to the rear line is 12-foot difference in elevation. So in order to put the pool anyplace in here, you have to build a wall, too. So you get to be the pool in the wall. And also, there's one point of the wall that's going to be slightly over five feet, about five and a half feet. So you're going to need a fence on top of the wall, plus you need the fence around for the required for the construction of a pool.
So how far away are you from the tributary?
This is the wetland area here. This line here is the 150-foot line. So the do-not-disturb is from 75 feet to 150 feet.
Yeah.
And this area, this blue and red area is the pool. It's only this red area with pool that's actually in the do-not-disturb zone. And the wall is along this area here and along back here. So all of this portion of the wall and the portion of the fence that goes along the section would be in the do-not-disturb zone.
So have they made you evaluate the stormwater calculations through Lisa Eggleston?
We did do that. We're proposing a rain garden here and a rain garden here to capture the runoff from the added impervious we're doing. Lisa Eggleston, that's doing the review for planning, she wants... She's not comfortable that the grading's going to work out that great. So what we are going to do, which she hasn't seen yet mainly because they... The planning department asked us for a landscape plan, and I'm finally supposed to get it by tomorrow. We are going to be adding some infiltration trenches along the patio here, 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 tied to subsurface, and give her the calculation showing her that we're infiltrating way more than what's required for the...
But that's a big deal, because of your proximity to the tributary.
Right now, we're... What, right now, the way we're proposing it is that the runoff coming off the site after we're done is equal to or slightly better than what it is right now. But...
And are her findings in? Did she render her findings yet?
There was a...
And do we have them?
Lisa Eggleston?
Yeah.
She had an initial comment that was by letter, a second one by email. She has not... I have not responded to the final one yet, because part of that's tied into the landscape plan. So her final one, you won't... The planning board will not see until probably Thursday.
See, so I'm only one person. I'll just get right to the heart of the matter. I think that, as it relates to the stormwater runoff, it's the basis for the variance, it's the whole basis for the waiver.
Right.
And, you know, I'm inclined, if Lisa... If I get Lisa Eggleston's findings in our record and the planning board accepts them, I have a much higher comfort level than shooting from my hip without knowing what those findings are going to be. That's something that I personally would be looking for. Because I don't want to... I don't... I'm not inclined to waive a variance as it relates to the lake without knowing what the stormwater findings are. Because she's the purveyor, you know?
Well, that's understandable.
But you might have four here that says it's okay. And I'm just telling you what I'm looking for.
The reason why Ellen left, because said, "My other life, that's what I did. I wrote these regulations."
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, I mean, I think it's probably doable, but I like to have those in the record, and I like to see them, because she's the expert.
I have no problem if you, you know, want to hear anything else the board may want, and we can continue it.
These guys may not agree, so, you know? Have to see where everybody falls on that.
No, I understand what you're saying. I think it's a good idea. It makes sense. Because, well, we are the conservation board now, right?
Well, I mean, the bylaw is in place, so they're asking for a waiver. So, yeah, I mean, you gotta... Otherwise, I just don't feel as though I'm doing my diligence.
And we go to the conservation officer for her okay?
I think so.
Basically, it's what we're doing, right?
They're going to handle the whole stormwater.
We'll be back before the planning board next meeting next week. So by then, they should have... Lisa should have her final comments, based on what I'm going to submit to her tomorrow afternoon.
So that's enough time, I think, for us to have, be able to render a decision for our May meeting if we have all those comments in the record. You know, I frankly think.
One question. Why couldn't he move the pool a little bit closer to the house? So you take the red out of the house?
Well, they have an existing patio here. And they are expanding it a little bit. And they're putting a kitchen area here. And even putting it...
I see you could.
Putting it in further, I mean, there's a gray differential from here to there.
But if push came to shove, you could push the pool out of that little bit of red, out of that zone there, correct?
I think if push came to shove, they try to do it as long as the board would be...
That's even better.
Would be comfortable with us allowing some of the retaining wall to be in the do-not-disturb, I mean, the do-not-disturb zone. Because to get it, to get the entire pool and wall out of the do-not-disturb, we have to kick a way into here, which is just not feasible. We know that.
For the pool and the wall.
But if the wall could stay here, the pool could kick that way a little bit to get...
But when the house was constructed, these constraints were in place. So they, you know, this isn't anything new in terms of... So it's not like you're creating your own hardship. You know, it's kind of like, we want to put the pool here because it fits the best. But you could move it and make it more comfortable.
It's possible they may run into ledge. You don't know?
But you don't know if you're going to run into ledge or not.
Oh, this is filled.
Oh, okay.
We have proof from the existing topography from the site to what this is now. We know this whole area was filled. We know that if we go this way, with ledge being here, and this is... We know that that's going to be ledge there, too. How deep, you know, we run into it, we don't know.
So in a better-case scenario, you could push the pool closer to the house and leave the retaining wall where it is. If you had to.
Probably do a little bit of both.
So that would be doable, and you wouldn't need a variance from us?
I'd still need the variance for the wall and the fence.
For the wall and the fence, but not the pool?
Right.
But not the pool, right. Because the way the definition of a permanent structure, which is identified in do-not-disturb, it includes pools, walls, and fences.
And Lisa's going to give us the answer, right?
Yeah, so the question would be, which plan is she evaluating?
She's going to evaluate a plan like this, but with more infiltration than what she's seeing right now.
Yeah. So whatever that final version is, we would want her results. If it's moved over, as Ellen suggested, which is a great, great idea, because it's much less of an impact.
Intrusive, right?
Yeah.
It's much less intrusive.
I think so. I think so, because of the runoff. So, I mean, if all the runoff is being collected, but, you know, the chemicals and so forth, I mean, that's kind of the... I think that's why it was, the lines of demarcation were made in the first place.
Right.
Make a motion to continue?
Well, we'll follow.
As though we're at...
Well, I don't know if there's anybody else that wants to be heard on this one. Nobody here on this.
Probably the only question that I would ask, just so that it's said on the record for us, is can you... So we're talking about building in a non-disturbed zone. So can you tell us what it means to... What a non-disturbed zone means? So what are we actually regulating here? What are we addressing?
In a non-disturbed zone, well, one thing, in the general Watershed Protection District, all the underlying uses are allowed. This pool, this wall, anyplace else in this lot is allowed by right. Get a building permit. We don't need a special permit. Wouldn't have to come from variance. But in the non-disturbed zone, any permanent structures require a special permit in a variance. I forget all the other definitions in there, but as far as what pertains to this is that a permanent structure requires a variance and a special permit.
And you wrote the regs, so why? You know, why do we care about this non-disturbed zone?
Well, you're... Well, I didn't write this reg. I wrote someone else's regs. But, you know, the intent of, you know, the intent of Watershed Protection District is you want to try to encourage natural features. And you don't want urbanized impervious areas to pollution runoff. And you want to try to recharge, and you want to maintain your groundwater, and obviously, and everything, and keep everything clean to keep your water supply clean. And that's why the very first thing that you see in any Watershed Protection District is, you know, typically, what is, is gas stations, underground fuel storage and everything are completely not allowed. I mean, you can't get them. They're just out. But it's just there to protect the water, the surface water and the groundwater supply. And so the more natural features you can maintain, you can afford... That affords you to do that as a community.
And in the alternative, if you can't have the natural features, then you put in artificial features, such as the infiltration system and the rain gardens?
We're significantly away from the watershed. I mean, you can't say you can't build at all in a watershed. So when you take around the... When you take away the natural features that promote groundwater, then, i.e. impervious areas, then you want to take, capture the runoff from those impervious areas and pump them back into the ground so that you keep your groundwater recharged. And because part of your water supply, surface water supply anyways, is from surface waters and groundwater.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more question. How many feet are we talking with that little red area of the pool?
That's, you know...
Two feet, three feet, four feet?
The actual feet is, this is a 20-scale, so the maximum point is probably 15 feet. That's why I say it would probably go in and over a little bit.
So on the largest portion is about 15 feet?
It's 21.8% of the pool. It's a very small area.
Potentially less than.
Pardon me?
Potentially less if it gets moved a little bit.
Yeah. Now, it's not the deck, it's just the pool, because you don't need the permit for the deck. You only need the permit for the pool.
All right. Because it's deemed destruction.
Correct. You don't, you don't need, you don't need a building permit for the deck. You only need a building permit for the pool.
Sure. All right. Well, I mean, I think that would be the way to go in terms of.
Should we hear from any of ours?
I don't think there's anyone here on this. Right? They all, they all said no.
They're all the next one.
They're all the next one.
Motion to continue to May 9th, Mr. Chair.
Second motion.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing one? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's, let's continue. Can we look forward? You can file that additional information.
Yes. I'll submit, I'll submit what I have as of right now. And once I receive a final comments from our final submission, I'll follow that. Actually, I'll do it as a package. This way here, it's not piece filled. You'll have all three comments from her, all well in time before your next meeting.
That'd be helpful.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming and waiting. All right. All right. Next on, the next matter on the agenda is. Yes, the matter of Harold Trombley III. So I am going to recuse from this hearing. I'm not going to sit on this. I think Ms. McIntyre will be back in in a second. Okay? You can just note that on the record. So, Mr. Clutch, I think you'll be chairing this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glad you could, glad you could join us.
Do you know he's just leaving early?
Yeah. Yeah.
I feel cold coming off the thunderstorm made.
Mr. Chair handed me the gavel. Unfortunately, someone else is going to need to read the notice. Who is going to be the acting clerk, Madam Vice Chair?
You want to read it?
Someone else can read it.
I can't see it. You want to read it?
Yeah, I got it right here.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Notice is, notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Town Hall located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts on Tuesday, April 11th, 2017 at 7:30 to all parties interested in the petition of Harold Trombley III. For property address 76 Colgate Drive, North Andover, Massachusetts. Map 081.0, parcel 0022, North Andover, Massachusetts, in the R4 zoning district. The petitioner is requesting a special permit from 4.122.22 of the zoning bylaw, family suite in the R4 zoning district is required from the zoning Board of Appeals. And a variance from section 2.37.1 of the zoning bylaw states the size of the family suite is not to exceed 1,200 square feet or not more than 25% of the gross floor area of the principal unit, whichever is lesser. The applicant's plan exceeds 25% gross floor area of the principal structure by 496 square feet and is looking for a variance for the additional square footage. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the town, at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, from the hours of 8:00 to 4:00, Tuesday from 8:00 to 5:30, Friday 8:00 to 11:30. By order of the Board of Appeals, Albert M. Manzi, the third Esquire Chairman.
Okay. Hi.
How you doing?
Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah. Harold W. Trombley III, 76 Colgate Drive.
Terrific. Welcome. And we have two things on the docket. As Doug bred, we've got a special, special permit for the use and then a variance for the square footage of the project. My suggestion, I think, is to talk about the special permit to, to, the use itself first as a family suite. So if you could give us a little background, what you, what you're looking for.
What we're trying to do is add a family suite. But as you saw, it's, you're allowed 25%. So we need the extra square footage for my in-laws to move in with us on that part of land.
Is this the addition to your? I'm, I'm seeing that the existing family room is what's there. But then the rest of this is all what you're looking to do.
Right. But there's, there's other pages that show our house that's on there. If you rotate it to go through.
I think the problem is that existing opposed to what you want is not clearly defined.
Well, I think it's very clear.
You can?
I think it's, the fact I just think it's a lot.
I think it's very clear. I have, I happen to agree with my colleague that day. It's a lot. But let the man finish his speech and.
So, yeah, what we're trying to do is make it so in the neighborhood, it's, we don't want to go higher with it or lower, just one. And also an open concept. Reason for the open concept is my father-in-law is 100% disabled through the vets. And so we're thinking down the road. We're thinking 10, 15, 20 years down the road when he has to go into a wheelchair. We want it to be open. We want the doorways to be wider. We wanted the, the main bathroom for him just so they can, like, if he was in a wheelchair, not saying he is right now, but when he goes into a wheelchair, that he can go right into the shower and that. So we're not trying to change something later on. We're not trying to, you know, spend all this money right now and then down the road, spend more money to make it open concept wider for him to be able to get around inside that home.
I think it's great that you're planning ahead. I hope it never actually, you need that. I will just say right off the bat, and I understand that you're looking for the additional square footage. I think this is probably one of the biggest in-law suites I have seen. I've only been on the board for a year, so I, doesn't necessarily mean much.
We're not allowed to have the in-law, the family suite?
Well, the family, the family suite. This, in my opinion, looks really big.
Okay. And we did a plot plan. So we showed that we were inside of the, where we're allowed to be.
So let me ask you, what's the size of the existing house? And just to put it into perspective?
2,000. It's early 1984.
And what's the size of the addition?
Almost 1,000.
Yeah, just shy of 1,000. 996.
That's a 50.
So, just to be clear, that is part of, of one, one stall of the garage in your proposed figures?
The garage is, you can't count this definitely.
No, so it's not. So you have.
You're not allowed to.
2,000 of existing living space in your home, and you want to add an additional 1,000 square feet, 50%.
Of living space.
Of living space to, for an in-law.
Yes.
Wait. He's looking to him. 50% more space.
Correct.
Roughly 1,000 square feet. And this addition is going to have two bathrooms. This family suite's going to have two bathrooms.
Is there reason?
Yeah, it's just two bathrooms. Full bath and one half bath, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. And if you look at the property from the street on the elevation shot?
Yeah.
What you really created is a two-family home.
Yeah. But you're not allowed to have, it's not a two-family.
I understand. But what happens, something that happened in your lifetime or your father's lifetime or in somebody's lifetime, that you people sell the house. Now, you've created a second apartment, 1,000-foot apartment with two bathrooms.
My understanding is.
And there's two garages. There's a separate garage that went to the property. There's separate entrances.
Well, the garage is one, one garage altogether.
Well, not according to this. It looks like a, a two-stall garage.
Well, it's a two-stall, but there's no walls in between. So when you go in, it's still.
Very easy to install the walls, correct?
Sure. You could install anything if you wanted to. But the thing is, is if I understand that the law's right also, is that if we decide down the road that, I mean, hopefully you guys don't know as much as I do, that they're going to pass away right away, that we are going to either us move in, as long as we stay with the family, as long as, as long as you stay in the family. So if we decide down the road, 20, 30, 40 years down the road, for my wife and I to go to that side, and one of my sons to take this side, then it just still stays in the family. If you decide to then try to, or if my sons didn't want to stay, we could take out a kitchen and now just have a house that seems like it belongs out country.
I'm in the real estate business.
Yeah.
And on average, houses turn over every seven years.
Okay.
Okay. You're talking 30 years from now. Let's go to the average. Things happen to people's lives.
Right.
Okay. Okay. My, my father died in a car accident. Okay? That wasn't expected. Things happen in people's lives that have a tendency to change the way the best laid plans are.
Right.
Okay. So, I mean, you're talking 30 years. That's a long time, my friend.
Yeah. We're not planning, we've, we've been there our whole lives.
Yeah.
Our families have been here our whole lives. We're not planning on leaving North Andover, even though North Andover kind of gives a, kind of a push once in a while. We have a business in town. We're trying to stay in town. We want to be part of this town.
I mean, I just see a two-family, a thousand square foot.
Well, no, it's not two-family. Shouldn't I allow.
I know it's not allowed, but should you sell the property, should something happen, the town is left with this.
Okay. Now.
That's the way I see. This is what the town is left. And that's a beautiful neighborhood.
Uh, well, I, I disagree with you on that.
I don't like the neighborhood. I mean, you have a gorgeous house with a big lot.
Yep.
So I see where you meet all those zoning requirements. But it's really not fair to the neighborhood that, as she said, this large structure be erected there.
Well, I, I also, I don't have any, none of the neighbors are coming back at us as of I know right now. I do know I have two neighbors here. So I can't speak for them. But I think they're also part of it. All our neighbors are on board with us, that own property that are right around us. And again, I have two neighbors that I, I can't speak for them. I think they're here for us, but I don't, I can't say that if they are not.
This is something I'll say, not to jump in, but just to give you an idea of, I think, where the board's coming from, is we're setting a precedent with what we do or don't do with you.
Yep.
So if we allow such a large expansion, we're setting that precedent. I think what you're doing is amenable. And I think that's a great, especially considering the fact that it's in-laws. But this, the whole purpose more so of the in-law suites is more so that they have their own bedroom, maybe their own sitting area, a bit of a kitchen. This, to me, looks more like they're ready to entertain in, in their, their suite. Where it's more supposed to be a place just for them to, kind of more so for them, not for, I mean, 1,000 square feet, that's, that's pretty much an apartment and a house for some people. That's not supposed to be the intent of this. So that's why I think the extra square footage you're looking at is, is what's causing that problem. I don't see where this is a place for your in-laws, that there is two bathrooms needed. This is meant for them, not, you know.
So the only thing I've heard so far is the two bathrooms.
It's the size in general. I mean, I'm looking at a dining room and a living room. And I kind of sit here and say, if it's for both of them, is, is both of that needed? Because you can, you know, make this smaller by more combining those two.
Okay.
There's a reason why they require, they say 25%.
Right.
And it's for the intent of having a, a family suite. Not, for me, this looks like a two-family. The intent, when you do it 50% of the house, it absolutely screams two-family. The layout, the size, the longness of the house, taking up almost, excuse me, all of the lot.
Look at the elevation shot. Right? I mean, here's the elevation shot. It is a two-family.
Yep. A lot of times when you see a family suite, it's something hidden in back with a little back entrance, not this, this looks like, this is a two-family in my eyes.
Okay.
I mean, I think if you rework the dining and living, and of course, I'm not saying put them in a shoebox. I don't think that's right either. But that's why we allow 25%, which is still a good chunk of space.
500 square feet, you think's good for a family suite?
I think you're talking for two people is essentially what you're looking at. I mean, that, that's essentially, the purpose of it is, like I say, it's, it's for them to be able to stay there. And in some cases, it reduces the economic cost, the financial cost, you know, allowing the daughter, son, whatever, to move into the main property. I've only been on the board for a year, but this is, this is the biggest one I've seen. And I've seen multiple ones done for two people that are smaller, that don't push the, the envelope as wide as you're trying to push it.
I mean, it's within your right to come here to ask for the, the variance. I mean, that's apparently why you're here, because you, you're looking for the relief of, which is a lot of relief, which our board tends to be a little more conservative.
The, and the hint of the, of what Woods are articulating is it's not supposed to be a second house. It's not supposed to be a family second house. It's supposed to be a family efficiency apartment or a family studio apartment.
Yeah.
For folks to come and crash and be near the other family members who may or may not be taking care of them, but at least have proximity and an economy of scale. So what the board is reacting to, myself included, just so that my voice is, is heard and you're not misled by my silence, is we have a lengthy history of folks using family suites as two-family houses, using family suites as income-producing apartments, which neither of those two things are within the intent of family suite. I'm not hearing you suggest that you have the intent to have this be an income-producing apartment or that it be a second house, but a place for your in-laws to, to live with you guys. So with that in mind, if we are married in our intentions here, then 1,000-square-foot second, 1,000-square-foot addition is just grossly beyond anything that I would be even remotely comfortable granting. Talking about it, as Ms. Jacobs and, and Ms. McIntyre was a word suggesting, talking about it is absolutely within your purview, and that's why you come here, get the feedback from the board. And then it's, you know, rework it or, or press the application for, for a vote and then appeal from there. That's certainly whatever strategy or will you have. So again, my message is just to, to echo my brothers and sisters on the board by suggesting that 1,000-square-foot family suite is not within the, the scale of anything that I would consider seriously approving. For, if you came in at 496, we wouldn't have a variance. We would only have a special permit. We would be producing, you know, just as to the use, would be a relatively easy vote. We'd give you the normal speeches and caveats about how this had better not become an, you know, income-producing apartment or the second home, things like that, or somebody outside of the first order of family to come live. We'd give all those speeches. But at the end of the day, speaking only for myself, but tradition among the board, is that we have a history of granting the special permit part. The variance is where we are really falling down today.
Okay. Well, I can't change a guy's mind, so nothing I can say or do to.
So one, one of their, you know, a couple of things that can be done. One is that we can continue the hearing certainly for another month or two or three, if you're interested in reworking the plans. You can certainly withdraw the application if you're, if you're saying, you know what, I got to have 1,000 square feet. My in-laws need it. You know, that's a bust. Or press for a vote, which certainly doesn't feel like it would go favorably.
No, I definitely would go next month. And this way I can talk to them about it and see if they feel like trying to change something up. What is a reasonable number, though? Is that 500 the reasonable number?
It, it should be within spitting distance of the 496, yeah. You know, whatever, whatever 25% of 1984 is, I think that's what you articulated, is the square footage of the house, within spitting distance of that.
Okay. Yeah. So I guess I go. Yeah, till next month. And this way I can just at least be able to talk to them about it.
I make a motion to continue.
Before you do that, there's people here. They want you to speak. I mean, whoa, reel that back in, everybody.
Hyperspace. So with, with that part of the dialogue, if there is anybody in the gallery who is here to speak on the matter, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium, name and address, and then say what you have to say. Come on up, sir.
Robert Winnie, 58 Colgate Drive, two houses away from where Harold lives. So when he proposed this, I looked at the layout. And based on what's, other houses are on the street and the variety of houses, I didn't see a problem with it. So from my point of view, I don't have a problem with him having a, the, the suite, in-law suite there. If it's a violation of what you would approve for square footage, then that's a different issue. But.
So.
We're just here to, I'm just here to say that I would not be opposed to something that would be considered in the future, a two-family, or think it would be a detriment to our street.
Okay. So I think, just to, just repeats, I'm, I'm clear. I think what I'm hearing you say is conceptually, a family suite is, is, you know, is, is fine with you.
Yes.
I think I also heard just, have you taken a look at the plans?
Yes.
And so generally speaking, those, those plans are not in any way offensive in your support of?
No. They're, they're not in any way offensive with my support.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
No.
No. Any? Any last words, or shall we continue?
No, just to push it on till next month and see if we come up with something that would maybe...
But relax, oh, God. I know you're looking at the clock, and you turn into a pumpkin in five minutes, but just, maybe if you can take the design and make it not as long, or just make it a little more, you know, just around. I know you're with the pool, and I also am going to have to ask you about your shed. How big is that?
The shed?
Yeah.
I think it's probably eight by 10.
Okay.
Or 10 by 10.
Eight by 10 is good. Okay. What? Because if it was more than eight by 10, it'd be considered a structure? It's eight by eight?
Eight by eight is the threshold.
Otherwise, it's considered a structure, and that would be one of your lot lines.
64 square feet.
So if...
I didn't actually measure, but I will for next meeting.
Eight by eight?
Yeah, understood.
Because it's on there, so that would be, because that's a violation of your...
Okay.
...lot in the back. Isn't it 20-something?
Yeah, I'll just say, as the only architect on the board, I'll second the comment about
the stretching of the building along the street scape, and, you know, in my eyes, it would be more favorable to go backward as much as possible. It's helpful to the street, it retains the character of the neighborhood as a single-family residential area. And I mean, from my, as you may be looking back to reevaluate the design, I mean, there's a kind of perplexing aspect of this bylaw to me, is that it actually encourage, I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that it actually encourages you to make your house bigger, make your single-family house bigger. If you added, if you doubled the size of your, you know, conforming to zoning, but by right, you could just put a regular addition to your property without calling it a family suite. I understand you want it to be a family suite, you want it to have separate cooking facilities, but I think the general intent of our bylaw is, even though it does encourage that in your designing, it still attempts to retain the character of like a primary residence and a kind of appendage to that. And the kind of scale of those two is what the bylaw is looking for, and that's kind of relates to the comments that you've heard, I think. So, I mean, there's things you can do, like, without playing designer too much here, I'll let you, I'll let everyone go, but there's things you could perhaps do with taking existing rooms and maybe bringing that over to the existing, sorry, to the proposed in-law suite, and kind of moving things around a little bit, but I'll leave that to your evaluation.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
Go ahead, go, now go. Stop it.
I make a motion to continue this matter till the next meeting?
Both matters, the special...
Both matters, correct, right.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Ellen, you're not ready, we're not done yet. We're not done yet.
So there are two more things on the agenda. It says the town meeting warrant articles, which I don't necessarily notice.
I don't have those.
I don't have those either.
So perhaps there was an intention that Alan... Nothing?
I just wanted to know, we don't have any...
Okay.
Well, just remind everyone, a town meeting is May 16?
16.
16.
16.
This is the voice of the town to let everyone know, if you want your things hurt, go to town meeting and vote, not five people.
And there is a chappelle letter dated March 30th, 2017, with an annual update on 40p developments, particularly Meeting House Commons and Oak Ridge Village with the Maplewood Reserve. And with that, I think we are done, so there's likely a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Seconded. That's Doug, that's everybody seconded. All in favor?
Aye.